It is five o'clock, Mayor, if you would like to...
Five o'clock, we're going to call the meeting to order.
This is the regular meeting of August 20th, 2024, and...
All members are present?
Yes.
And we're going to, without objection, we'll move into...
Is there a motion to move to closed session?
Well...
I'll second it. You missed it.
No, do we have to do anything about this, or is this already put on the agenda?
It's not, but we're going to do it later.
Oh, okay.
That was a motion by Councilmember Inmeyer, second by Mayor, excuse me, Councilmember Noblock, second by Mayor Protim Inmeyer.
All in favor?
All in favor. Here's 5-0 to recess to closed session at 5:00 PM. Thank you.
This is the regular business meeting of August 20th, 2024. Invitation will be given by Pastor John Randall with Calvary South, Orange County. Don't see him here. Is he?
Oh, there he is.
Oh, there you are. Come on up. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, on behalf of Calvary South OCIA, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening, and thank you for your commitment to the work that you do for our city. I'd love to pray for you tonight. Dear Heavenly Father, we humble ourselves before you as we seek the peace and the prosperity of our city. We lift up each council member, city staff, and community members that have been entrusted with the responsibility of making decisions that impact the lives of our residents, and we ask for guidance and clarity and discussion, that every topic would be approached with open minds, compassionate hearts, patience, in order to understand different perspectives and find common ground amidst diversity. Let the conversations this evening be marked by respect, integrity, and a commitment to working towards unity, and may all involved in this meeting embrace the spirit of collaboration and teamwork where the voices of each constituent is heard and would lead to meaningful progress for our city and all who call it home. And we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen. Amen.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
It's always a pleasure to have you here. This is the second time this year, and again, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Let's see. Let's just face the flag, put your hand over your heart, and we'll start.
.......................................
All right.
We'll note for the record that all council members are present.
All right. So, we're gonna have a special awards presentation for a couple of our students, and so why don't we, we'll all participate, Will. And I think we have a guest also from the Human Affairs also.
We had the principal there, too?
Yeah.
There we go.
Tyler, do you want to come down? We'll all come down, and we'll invite the two students that are...
And Principal Baker, come on.
And the principal, yeah. He's got to be ahead.
This is presentation of the Human Relations Leadership Award to San Clemente High School students Grace Pratt and Kylie Marses in recognition of their service and dedication to the community.
And I can just say a couple words about this award. This humanitarian award is kind of just an annual reminder for our city that San Clemente not only has excellent weather, beaches, surf, and quality of life, but also excellent people. And the Human Affairs Committee has been interviewing students for this award since I joined the committee, which is ancient history by now, but the interview process really aims to identify students that not only stand out from an academic standpoint, but also in their service to the community. And so, we're very, very happy. Just one comment, both these students had come from their AP tests when they came in for their interviews, and so...
That is marked for an A if you're...
They got it.
So, they were in the midst of a very stressful time, and they both had stellar interviews, and we were so impressed with what they've done already in their high school careers, but also what they plan to do as they move forward. So, we're very, very grateful and excited to announce these awards, so thank you so much.
You're here on behalf of the Human Affairs?
That's right. Yes.
Okay. Let's bring Grace, and come on up. Give one of these to...
Sure.
Do you want to be one of them?
Sure.
All right.
I'm Grace.
Oh.
That's yours.
You want to switch? We'll bring the teacher up here.
All right. Grace, congratulations. Both of them were my students, both phenomenal students, so this is really heartwarming to see you guys up here and so brotherly to give this to you guys, so. Whereas, Human Affairs Committee of the City of San Clemente recognizes the outstanding student leaders who have further mutual respect among fellow students and foster multicultural understanding, and whereas Grace Pratt has challenged herself academically as an accomplished multilingual student with an exceptionally high-ranking grade point average that awarded her with numerous achievement awards athletically through track and cross-country, and philanthropically through volunteering at the Orange County Library and founding a San Clemente High School's Band Books Club, and whereas Grace Pratt has demonstrated her desire to make a difference on campus, serve her service as an ASB Executive Board Member, an appointed member of the Principals Council, and as the Community Service Coordinator, and whereas Grace Pratt has passionately demonstrated leadership in the numerous organizations she has served, such as co-founding and serving the Model United Nations, participating in Model Congress, and Constitutional Rights Foundation of Orange County Peer Court Juror, and established Great Grades with Grace, a tutoring business, and now therefore...
I, Victor.
I, Victor. Mayor of the City of San Clemente, acting on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of San Clemente, do hereby recognize Grace Pratt.
I need to get your information for tutoring.
Principal, you have anything you wanted to add, or...
No, these are just two incredible seniors, and I'm looking forward to getting to know them better and working closely with them to help our community and our schools, and I'm very proud.
And our Human Affairs Committee, you go ahead and...
Sure. So, whereas, the Human Affairs Committee of the City of San Clemente recognizes the outstanding student leaders who have further mutual respect among fellow students and foster multicultural understanding, and whereas Kylie Marses has challenged herself academically in the International Baccalaureate Program athletically through track, cross-country, and martial arts at United States Self-Defense, philanthropically in her volunteer service with Small Steps for Compassion, a nonprofit that supports young girls in Tanzania-Africa, San Clemente Library, Concordia Elementary School, beach cleanups, Ocean Festival, and family assistance ministries, and the contributions to the San Clemente High School campus through her service as an ASB Executive Board Member and the annual homecoming parade, and whereas Kylie Marses endeavors continuing her education by studying at Princeton University with a major in aerospace and mechanical engineering that will enable her to pursue a career in research and development of 3D spatial studio, and now...
Now therefore he, Mayor of the City of San Clemente, acting on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of San Clemente, do hereby recognize Kylie Marses. Everybody in there. Well, first, we'll do one with the city, and then we'll have if your family or parents are... Anybody you're here with?
Thank you.
Do you want to bring your family up? What about these kids over there? You guys want to...
Those are my brothers.
All right. Come on up. Wait a minute. Oh, yeah. I'm 100% sure. Gotta get Brad the heads up on the aloha time next time, by the way.
Next time.
All right. Next item on the agenda, we have a report.
Presentation by Matt Silver concerning Civica Law Group's work for code compliance in Orange County Sheriff's Department.
Matt is giving Jay Christian, our Chief of Police, a run for his money on the mustache. I think, "Put this guy in uniform, Jay." Look at that stash.
It's not been well received at my house. It might be on borrowed time, but thank you for that.
Well, good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Adam Matamian, Community Development Director, I just wanted to introduce Matt Silver with Civica Law Group APC as the firm that is providing city prosecutorial services for the city. For some folks in the audience or some council members that may not be familiar with the work that Matt Silver has done for the city over the years, I wanted to give a little brief background. Matt has been working with us under two firms to provide code compliance legal services and city prosecuting services for citations that are issued, both by code compliance and the Orange County Sheriff's Department, since 2017 and has been doing a phenomenal job. We really respect the work that he does, and we're excited to have him present an update on that work for you tonight.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Adam, for that warm welcome, and thank you always, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, and staff for having me and the chance to serve the community. Thank you also for the chance to report out to the community. I appreciate your time here tonight. So, I don't know if I have a clicker here or not. Is it? Oh, thank you very much. Thanks. Great. Again, my name is Matt Silver. I've had the honor of serving as the city prosecutor for seven years now. It really has been an honor helping work with code compliance and OCSD and park rangers and staff generally to keep this city, the wonderful city it is. Every city has issues. We have less than a lot, thankfully, but we have our issues, and our job is to take these to the court when we don't get compliance voluntarily, which is always the first step. So, the goal here today is kind of a follow-up. A number of years ago, we did a report out to the community that was well-received, I think, about what we do. Where does the taxpayer money go? Where does the council's trust in me to do the work with the city? Where does it go? What do we do? So, the goal here is to provide that transparency and, of course, answer any questions the council may have here today. So, this is a follow-up from prior year's enforcement. It's not too long, so I'll keep it pretty brief here. Today, we're gonna focus just on the last two years very briefly. Sometimes people don't know what the heck code compliance is. What is code enforcement? And I'll note that when I was in college, I was offered a job as a code compliance officer, and my response to that is, "What the heck is code compliance?" And someone told me, "You don't want to do it. It's a tough job." It is a tough job, and funny how life works out. I've been doing this for about 20 years, and it's been great. Code compliance folks are unsworn servants of the public. These are not peace officers, they're not police officers, although they work closely with them. They come from a wide variety of backgrounds. In fact, our own Adam Matamian has a planning background, which comes in very helpful in our city. They have an extremely wide range of duties. I refer to them as the Swiss Army Tool of a city, because if it's an issue that we don't know how to deal with, code deals with it. If it's an issue of quality of life, or neighbor issues, or business issues, code deals with it. Whatever the issue is, code enforcement's involved in some way or another. Their job is to enforce the municipal code, the San Clemente Municipal Code and certain state laws, and our goal is compliance, first, second, and third, it's compliance. We want to ensure a healthy and safe community, and then, of course, what would this be without a quote from old Ben Franklin about, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." Some examples of what they deal with are things that I'm sure people in this audience have driven by or dealt with in their own communities. Noise issues, enforcement of park rules, our park ranger division actually does that. We are a very special city in that we have dedicated park rangers to help with these quality-of-life issues. Unpermitted camping, which will be the subject, of course, of an ordinance in a couple of items from now, light glare, illegal vending issues, and then down to private property issues like group homes that are operating or substandard blighted buildings. Housing, substandard housing affects about 2 million Californians, 5% of the population, according to the U.S. Census, and we deal with them here, all the way down to unpermitted land use issues, weed abatement issues, and other things that affect people on a daily life. In the last 12 months, code compliance has received almost 2,100 complaints from the community. That's where violations come from. We don't drive around town looking for code violations necessarily. We don't turn a blind eye to them if we see them, but they are generated by neighbors, people living in conditions, next to conditions, that violate the code. They resolved 1,355. The rest are pending and on their way, and they do this with six code officers. In terms of my office, 1.1%, I rounded down for this presentation, 1.1% come to my office because code is so good at dealing with them without the need for legal enforcement, but sometimes that does happen. I also work with the Orange County Sheriff's Department and represent them in court when they issue criminal citations out in the field for violations of municipal code. Under state law, violations of the municipal code are a crime, and the city here enforces those. Those are strictly quality-of-life issues. When they issue those citations, we prosecute those because that's the jurisdiction of the city. The city prosecutor's jurisdiction begins and ends in the city. The DA handles penal code things, but the city is able to control its own destiny because it has a city prosecutor office. All right. We assist pretty much every department. We get calls from building and planning and everybody with code enforcement-related issues. We represent the city with administrative enforcement, abatements of substandard properties, or cleaning up hoarding properties or junky properties, appeals that go to court, civil enforcement, and I'll show a picture later on of a case that many of you will probably remember that's closed, but was an example of a civil enforcement. And then, like I said, we're in court pretty much every day down in Newport Beach and Santa Ana, representing the city and enforcing criminal citations for violations of the municipal code relating to public safety. But our goal is compliance here and now and long-term. That's the goal. Unlike the DA, our goal is not punitive for the sake of punitive. Our goal is punishment if it leads to compliance, but more likely, it's using our tools to get compliance without the need for jail, et cetera. Some examples of that are in criminal, and I'll give you some stats in a minute here, ordering people to housing who've otherwise declined housing. I think it was the mayor of San Francisco who said before the U.S. Supreme Court ruled recently on the homeless issue that they had a huge uptick in folks declining services. There's plenty of people accept them, but there are people who decline them. Our goal, if they get into the system because OCSD has cited them, is to then use that to get them into those services, and we've had tremendous success in breaking that cycle that way. We have also ordered people to Alcoholics Anonymous who show a history of alcohol abuse situations, mental health treatment. We had one that we were on the receiving end of, as a matter of fact, who showed the need for anger management courses, and I'm glad to say that she has accepted that and is doing well. Stayaway orders when people are violating laws in front of certain locations time and time again. The community needs to be able to go to those places without being intimidated or harassed. And then family assistance programs, and at times fines or jail if they violate those terms. And then we track compliance as well. An example of these kind of cases that we prosecute for the sheriff's department and code compliance and park rangers are listed right there. These are things that are a problem ranging from very serious to less impactful across the city. But public urination, defecation, when I was writing it, I was, I think, probably turning a little red in the face thinking about, "That's not something we normally want to talk about or think about, but that's an issue." Public nudity, people drunk in public, trespassing, solicitation, disorderly conduct, et cetera. These all come from calls to the sheriff's department to come help, and then this is the end result. Here's some statistics for you. In the last roughly 18, no, I'm sorry, 15 months, we have prosecuted 123 criminal cases that have been originated through the sheriff's department. That is but a fraction of the number of criminal cases that they cite for penal code or other violations. That's not our jurisdiction. But 88 have been successfully resolved. The others are pending in court right now. 24 of those have resulted in people... 24 of those have resulted in people getting into housing or going to anger management, rehabilitation programs, or Alcoholics Anonymous. 22 were ordered to stay away from a certain location, uh, which means that going back to that location where maybe there's repeat violations itself would be a violation. Other probation terms, one, fines are not a goal. Uh, in that number of cases, that's a relatively small amount of fines considering each violation comes with the potential for $1,000. But again, the goal is fines when that becomes the tool that's needed to get compliance. Total number of days of incarceration ordered, 181. Again, the same deal. That's often when someone has violated these terms. They've, they've been ordered to do these things, they violated them, well, the next step is jail time. Uh, several others have resolved in different ways, but at the end of the day, our goal is to fit the solution to the problem. So, we look at the facts and figure out what the problem is. How do we solve this so we don't see these people again in court? We don't wanna see them again in court. We want the problem solved. Okay. But aside from the criminal stuff we do, that's actually a small part. The vast majority is helping staff on a day-to-day with quality of life issues in the city. Substandard housing issues, uninhabitable properties. We had one house that was sliding down a slope that had collapsed. Uh, it was literally breaking in half, dealing with that. Property maintenance issues, we get a lot of calls from folks about, um, property maintenance that they're living next to where the house is dilapidated or the property is dilapidated. Uh, we do have one going on right now. That's a crime den. Uh, I'll probably talk about that in a couple, in a couple years. Um, and then appeals when it goes to court and other municipal code violations where staff's been unable to gain compliance. Here's an example you may recognize that actually ended last year. Uh, this was an abandoned, uh, gas station in a prominent area. They simply weren't maintaining it. Uh, looked pretty bad. There it is afterwards. That took a little extra maneuvering. For whatever reason, they didn't wanna comply. They talked about wanting to develop it, but talking about it and doing it two very different things and they didn't follow through. So ultimately, they were ordered by a court to deal with this and they agreed to do so and the city recovered its costs, which is a nice component for some of this. There's the after. Okay. In conclusion, code compliance protects the city. It helps save taxpayer dollars by preventing the problems that become expensive to solve. We try to remove, reduce legal liability for the city by removing legal liabilities from the city as well. And we try to help protect the community and the quality of life so that people can continue to live here and want to live here peacefully in the way that the council, uh, sets its goals. We enforce the laws that the council adopts and we help achieve the council and the community's goals. So with that, I hope that wasn't too long. I thank you for the opportunity. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, thank you very much, as always, for the opportunity to serve.
All right. Any questions?
Well, I just have one question, Matt. Are you gonna be around for the rest of the meeting? Because we have a couple of items coming up rather quickly that might involve code enforcement and you, you might be able to weigh in on them if you're available.
I'll be here and I'll be happy to do so.
Any, any questions?
I'll just make a comment. A few years ago, I met Matt because we had a issue on our, our, our street. It was, we had a blighted house that had been a problem for 20 years. And just when Matt got hired as prosecutor and within two, I think it took about two years, but the house was abated. It's got a beautiful house on it now and, and so I just wanna, I really appreciate the work that you guys do.
Thank you. I wanted to show those pictures 'cause that's a really good before and after.
That would've been, that would've been quite the, quite the shot.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Any, anything else? I have, I have one if nobody does. I, I have a, a question. We, we know that in this city, there's approximately 31 people who, uh, live around the city. Just, I, I don't wanna call them homeless, but unhoused. And, uh, most of those 31, according to our outreach people, have either mental health or alcohol or other issues. And we have tried repeatedly, and in fact, they tell me, they try every day to, to reach out to them, say, "Okay, are you, have you hit bottom? Are you ready to..." And the answer is always no. We just wanna stay here on the park and live here. I, i- is there a way after Grants Pass that we can, uh, address that, to go out and get them help, to send them to the facilities in Santa Ana or Orange, wherever they, they have the mental health facilities to, to treat them? And I know there was a state program, uh, that, uh, allowed you to put them in, but, but I, I haven't seen any follow-up on, on that. So, can you address those issues?
Yeah, sure, Mayor. Absolutely. That's a great point. So, now that, and we'll talk about this in a moment as well with the Grants Pass ordinance that'll be coming up, the camping ordinance, but we now have these tools that previously were not available to deal with that. Those tools I referenced earlier about when we get into the court process, criminal court process in that case, being able to order them to housing, to substance abuse treatment, to mental health treatment, we will have that opportunity once that ordinance, if that ordinance is passed and becomes law. And by the way, not to have too much of a spoiler alert for later, but nothing prevents the city from, even if they change, even if we change the law, uh, in light of the Supreme Court decision, nothing prevents us from continuing to offer those services. So, there are people who wanna take them. That's the goal. That's great. Problem solved. People who don't, we do have recourse now to court and that's the way to do it. And we do work, uh, very, very closely with the judge, the public defender and the homeless coordinator in court. Um, we have been dealing with our, some of our homeless or unhoused residents for some time in criminal court and, uh, have, have really good solutions 'cause we have a very good working relationship with those groups.
That's good. I, I mean, I, I'll tell you about a situation just today, uh, that, that several of us were, were out at the beach, including the city manager, city attorney, looking at, at a project. There's a, a woman known to our, our code enforcement, our sheriff, everybody, going across the, the tracks and going across where the trucks are delivering sand, really putting her life in danger.
Right.
Because those trucks cannot see someone and it, it says closed to the public. But, uh, you know, we had to call everybody and, including Troy and Carly and, and, uh, and our security that go out there and addresses. She didn't know where she was. She needs help, obviously. So, you know, th- those are the kinda cases that we have to just, not just say, "Okay, move her down the beach, hope she goes..." We, we gotta put her somewhere where, where she had, and, and there's a way to do that now, more readily and more easily?
Yes, Mayor. Yeah. And now that we have the care court law in place too, which allows the state a mechanism to, um, compel people into mental health care who may not be in a position to make that choice right now, 'cause they're not lucid, for example, um, we have an additional tool as well.
All right.
Yes, we have tools opening up to us now that are available and, and maybe in a little bit here will become available to us to better tackle those issues.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council.
Can I just make one comment here? I just wanna clarify that, yes, there are some service-resistant, uh, unsheltered out there, but there are also a lot who would appreciate services, but that may not, those services may not be available for them at that time and that there may be a, a waitlist for them to receive those services.
Yeah. My, actually, I'll, I'll note, my grandma suffered from mental illness and was in and out of homelessness. And so this is an issue that strikes very close to me, um, so I understand the, the balances in there. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next item, uh...
Council member reports.
Okay. Anybody wanna start or...
Sure, I'll start. A little bit late this time, just getting great, 'cause school started. Hey, so we're back in school and, um, first day was today. It's fun seeing all the kids, bright, shining spaces, coming back in, getting prepped for that. A couple things. Saw the Flock of Eighties, uh, concert. Chris, uh, you did a great job hosting that. It was a great concert, fun times. Uh, went to the Junior Lifeguard Award Ceremony. Steve, Victor, it's great having you guys there along for that. Then also, Rick and I got to go on a, a pier jump and then got a nice tour along with the, uh, or a ride-along, I should say, with the lifeguards in their lifeguard boat and got to do a, a jump off the back, see what it was like being a lifeguard for a day. It was, well, a couple hours, but it was, it was fun. It was good. And they're, they're working so hard out there and especially at the end of summer, our lifeguards have just done so many rescues and keeping us safe. So, thank you to our, our lifeguard program out there and also to the junior lifeguard program as well.
Mark, did you find some sand when you jumped off the pier? Was there good sand down there?
You know, we, we jumped, so we jumped off the pier, got on the boat and then we did, what, what is it called, Rick? The...
Butt drops.
Butt, butt drops off the back of the boat. So while the boat is driving off, this is what the lifeguards do when there's a rescue, they, they basically hang off the end of the boat and then as it's going, put their butt down, jump off and the boat goes away. So, gr- great experience, great experience.
You keep your bathing suit on?
I barely, barely, yes. But, uh, it was on, yeah. Tum t, yeah, TMI, sorry.
You have, any, any report?
I think you covered it. Just, just one thing. The, uh, Vector Control District is reporting that, uh, Orange County's having a pretty good season for the, uh, mosquito-borne diseases. We've had one fatality in California from the Dangie, uh, disease from the west, from the mosquitoes, but, uh, South County seems to be doing very well. So, just wanna encourage people to keep their pots empty, their, their water pot overflows, their fountains, things that collect water, standing water's a, a source. So, let's keep an eye on that and all else as well.
All right. Thanks. Rick?
Okay. Well, we, we had the Fiesta the weekend before last, another great, great event by the Chamber of Commerce and I, I don't know, how, it always seems like it has the same number of people 'cause you can't walk at all. It's just all Del Mar stuff. And, uh, great, great music and great time, great, great weather. So, that was a great event. Also, uh, Mark and I attended the homeless collaborative meeting also. Learned a lot of, a lot of good stuff. A couple of things I took away from that is we have organization I Hope and we have a couple of, Nancy is here from, from I Hope, great organization. And I think they have a model for a couple of things we could look at that they do for inclement weather, you know, emergency shelter kinda thing that they already do. So, we might be able to get a model from them to take a look at that. Also, another thing, and it kinda tails on with what Victor and, and Matt were saying, we, we always talk about home, you know, uh, service-resistant and, and certainly know we have a large percentage of that, but it's almost like we need a new classification because we have some people out there that are not mentally capable to accept services. And maybe we should have a new classification for mentally unable to, to know if they have the services, uh, 'cause I, I think that's probably a, a pretty good percentage of our, our homeless here. And last thing, I'll tell a little success story about our, our park rangers. Uh, a, a week ago, uh, at the park next to, um, Bernice Air School, a couple of park rangers working in the evening came up and there was a lone car that was kinda back in the parking lot and they could tell somebody was in it, but they, they couldn't really tell what was going on and they walked up on the car and they saw some activity in the car that they thought was very, very suspicious. So, they backed off and called the sheriffs. Sheriffs came out and there, in the car was a 27-year-old male and a 13-year-old female. And they took both of them into custody and thwarted, uh, a really bad situation and got the young lady home and, and took care of the, uh, the, the gentleman. So, park rangers, I mean, cruising and doing their, doing their job, made a good observation and brought in the people that needed to take care of the situation. So, a big shout-out to them.
Chris?
How old was the guy? 27? Any 27-year-old guy in there with a 13-year-old girl is not a gentleman. Well, describe him in a different way, but I get the point. This guy's a police officer trying to be correct here, but, um, the suspect, yeah. We, uh, yeah, we, we have commission and committee reports later, but I'll, I'll talk about some work on the Orange County Fire Authority. I have the honor of being our representative, uh, from San Clemente on the board there. The board of, of the Orange County Fire Authority authorized new helicopters, which just got introduced and there was some TV coverage about it, you might've seen it, but they basically look like the Airwolf helicopter. They're like Blackhawks, but they're red and black. They are spectacular. They're gonna make a huge difference and it really matters for San Clemente probably more than almost any other place because we have all this open space. We are in the wildland interface. If there's a big fire in Camp Pendleton, it's coming here. Uh, you know, we have all that open space behind us in Talega and so, this is a huge step forward for what I consider one of the top all-threats organizations in the country, if not the world, the Orange County Fire Authority. So, uh, you can rest assured that our tax dollars are being well-spent there on, on new technology. These Firehawks, they're called, they, they can handle three times the amount of water that the old Bell helicopters that they've been using, which are re, retreads from like the Vietnam War or something. And they, they're faster, uh, they, again, they carry more water, they don't have to refuel as much. So, this is gonna add an extra layer of protection for us who, uh, who are under threat, right? And we have all this fuel out there from, from this long, hot summer, right, as we get into kinda fire season here. So, good news on that front, that we have these two new helicopters in service. And again, the firefighters with OCFA do such a tremendous job. We're, we're lucky to be a part of that organization and, uh, again, we'll keep, keep you updated as we get more resources to protect us from the threat of fire, which is increasing. Thank you.
All right. Let's see.
Uh, I just wanted to let the city council know, uh, we have a meeting, uh, with OCTA coming up to talk about three major issues that are on their agenda, including the expansion of the toll road through San Clemente, uh, the expanding Los Petronas Parkway and a follow-up on OCTA remediation, uh, through sand replacement. There's a couple letters that went out that suggested that we needed EIR. Uh, I, I think our opinion is that we don't. I sent a letter out, I think you have a copy of it, but we're gonna discuss this with the OCTA and I'll follow up later with each of you and let you know at the next meeting, you know, how, how those meetings went. I also had the opportunity to meet, uh, this past week with Ken Galvert, uh, the congressman, chairman of the House Defense Appropriations Subcommittee. He was here in San Clemente. His subcommittee, which he is chairman, is responsible for funding all the Department of Defense, including Department of Army, Navy, Marine Corps, Air Force and the Office of Secretary of Defense and other defense agencies. He has the largest portion of discretionary funds, uh, in the US government, which he is responsible for distributing. I, I had a good meeting with him about a number of projects, including the, the, what, what the Army Corps is doing, what, what our collaboration with, uh, the Marine Corps Base. So, uh, I, I plan to follow up. I think we have a good partner in, in him and I hope to continue that relationship. Had a meeting this past week with the dean of the UCI School of Engineering and Brett Sanders, uh, discussing three or four different options where we can work with, uh, the students at the School of Engineering to help us with our sand projects. One of the, one of the, the, the projects that we discussed and we'll, we'll look further at is, he's gonna set aside students to compete to see how they can come up with a method to quickly and inexpensively bring sand to San Clemente. And they will, I, I trust, he says, uh, come up with some very creative and inexpensive ways to do that. So, uh, you know, when you use bright minds like that from the university, they, they think out of the box and, and so we'll look at it as an additional approach. Again, we, you mentioned the junior lifeguards. It's always exciting to see these young people, uh, full of energy, full of life, uh, enjoying our beaches, uh, looking forward to, 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 to being with them in the future. Assemblywoman Davis, uh, hosted a bipartisan event to thank our firefighters and first responders from all over Orange County. San Clemente was represented, uh, by police and fire. Uh, I was attend, I attended and Steve attended and we had representatives from the police departments of all the county agencies and the fire departments and others that work in the community. You, I wanna report on this because you might recall that last, uh, meeting, uh, I requested some money to attend, funding to attend the Senate, uh, hearing, uh, that was hosted by Janet Winn to celebrate the serving culture, or, culture and to meet and collaborate on future events in Orange County, including San, uh, Clemente. I just wanna report that I did not attend that and I did not attend that because at the time that I requested approval of the travel, I think the travel costs were estimated to be like $200. And by the time we got it approved by the city, uh, you know, four weeks later and a couple, a few days before the meeting, it was up to nearly $1,000. And I thought, "Well, it's, it, for 200, it's fine, for 1,000, it's not." And I thought, well, it's, for 200, it's fine, for 1,000, it's not. So, but I did get briefed on it, but we have other meetings to follow up on, on those efforts, and I'll continue. But it does bring up the question, and I think we'll address it at a future meeting, the whole idea of this, our travel policy. That's it for me. All right. Let's.
Okay, next on the, that's everyone. Next on the agenda is oral communications, and I do have several speakers, so I'll call the first few speakers up. Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Nancy McIntyre, followed by Susie Lance, followed by David McCombs. Amanda?
Hi. Good afternoon, council members. In recent weeks, there have been developments about the HOV lanes in the LPPE, Los Petronas Parkway Extension. Residents have been waiting for the PSR, PDS for over a year. Throughout the, this time, we were told by OCTA representatives that there were delays and that was customary. One update that was given was that HOV lanes would not be feasible since there was no HOV lanes past the San Diego County, Orange County border. And that was from Lance Larson to the city manager. I reached out to an OCTA representative, Mr. Federico, OCTA Director Jamie Federico, on July the 23rd, and received a call from another OCTA representative. I asked, I was, I asked Mr. Salak about HOV lanes, and they said they already had some preliminary studies and that they had a point of contact at the City of San Clemente. At a meeting of July the 31st, it was unfortunate that Mr. Hulk was not aware of that. So I was wondering who our point of contact was for the City of San Clemente. This is why it's imperative to continue to have a transportation subcommittee, and which I have been mentioning that for a couple of years now. I was recently informed from another OCTA representative, Christina Byrne, that the OCTA was waiting for the results of the Caltrans Managed Lanes Project and that the Caltrans next steps may affect the OCTA's HOV plans because, which makes sense, because the 2018 LRTP proved or showed that HOV 2-plus lanes were not, did not meet the federal standards because they were underused. Then the HOV 3-plus lanes met the federal standard, but they were overused. Then the toll lanes did meet, did meet the federal standard, and that doubled the use of HOV 3-plus lanes. Basically, these were the same plans that the TCA had to have tolling lanes, and that is a major concern because it brings up issues regarding right-of-way, you know, taking of land or property from business owners', private, private property through eminent domain of right-of-way rights or squier rights, similar to that of the burger stop. And also, as far as the Los Petronas Parkway Extension, there are concerns. I reached out to Ryan Chamberlain and because it was my understanding that the TCA were being finalized. And however, they said that they can partially fund the LPPE. And this is a concern because Supervisor Foley wants to ask TCA for funding of that. So that's a major concern regarding what entitlements the TCA wants to have.
Thank you for your comments. All I would say, I think you mentioned that our city manager was not on top of it. I can rest assured that he is on top of all this. There's been repeated meetings on these issues. He knows what's going on, the city council knows what's going on. But Andy, did you want to? Nope? Okay, all right. He is on top of it. Next speaker?
Nancy McIntyre, followed by Susie Lance, followed by David McCombs, followed by Warren Vedrine. Nancy?
Good evening. May I ask a ball? Council members, fellow citizens, my name is Nancy McIntyre, and I have been Shorecliff San Clemente resident for 49 years and teacher with Capistrano Unified for nearly 30 before I retired in 2005. Upon my retirement, I decided to work with a number of interfaith organizations to look at some common sense solutions for homelessness in South Orange County. So I was a founding member, and I am the secretary of the Board of Directors of I Hope. And we have been on the streets as an outreach group for, since 2009. We've worked with Carley and Troy and a variety of the outreach folks in South Orange County. And I'm also a member of the Homeless Collaborative, San Clemente Homeless Collaborative, with our leaders Donna Vedrine and Tom Streeter. And to that effect, last Monday, our last meeting, we had the honor of councilmen, members Lothar and Enmire, who came and made presentations to our group about some very positive steps that San Clemente is taking. And since I've lived here for 49 years, it is really good news to me to see those positive steps and the fact that even possibility of some permanent supportive housing, which we know is a very effective way of getting homeless people where they can receive services. So in addition, they listen very intently to some of our concerns. For example, perhaps giving Troy and Carley more resources, you know, perhaps for Uber rides to medical appointments or bus passes to homeless court. By the way, I Hope is the representative for OC Homeless Court in South County. So they work through us to get people who have been given, homeless people who have been given tickets to somehow remediate that. So, you know, perhaps a little more resources, they do a terrific job, and we certainly do appreciate them. The other thing that I'd just like to mention is Grants Pass. And there is a very, you know, after, after their lawsuit was upheld by the Supreme Court, they didn't ticket their way out of homelessness, and we're not either, and we're very glad to hear that. What they did do was they built a walled community, tiny houses, and with support services on site, which is the perfect way to deal and give people homeless, homeless people a chance. By the way, when we say homeless, oftentimes we think they're not working. But many of I Hope's clients are working, and it's just they don't make enough to afford housing in this high-priced South Orange County.
Thank you.
We appreciate all the work you've done, and thank you very much for that.
Susie Lance, followed by David McCombs, followed by Warren Vedrine.
Good evening, city friends. Hope everybody's well tonight. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the city staff, the city council, our amazing sheriffs, our RSVPs, inserts, for their help to put on the Fiesta Music Festival, which took place, not this past Sunday, but the Sunday prior, on the 11th. We have about 15,000 people normally in one day that attend that event. It was really, really successful this year, and we definitely couldn't have done it without the support of those teams. So just on behalf of the chamber, really want to thank you. The costs to put on these events have literally doubled since pre-pandemic. And so there's a lot of work involved and a lot of folks to make it happen. So even more so, it really, really makes a difference. So thank you. Also, wanted to invite you all to the chamber meeting, which will take place next Wednesday, as always, at the outlet's VIP lounge at noon. We always have a great speaker at these meetings. And we have a couple of ribbon cuttings coming up, one at Sylvester's Italian Chop House, formerly known as Landers. And next week, we will have Family Assistance Ministries on Thursday. So everything can be found on our calendar. We look forward to welcoming all of you. And then finally, if the community isn't aware, the City of San Clemente and chamber have an adopted Marine Battalion Unit 2-4, and we will be hosting a military barbecue next month in September here in town. It's also a pre-deployment meeting for them, so some of you will be getting invitations for volunteering and just wanted to, again, acknowledge the city and thank you for that, for that great partnership. That's it.
Thank you for all you do for the city.
Good evening. I'm David McCombs, longtime San Clemente resident. The challenge that I've come to talk to you about is the purple thistles on the hills. The purple thistles are obviously noxious weeds, and what happened was that we didn't do anything about it three years ago, and now they've taken over the hills. This is the most dangerous time for them because the heads are just blooming. As soon as the winds go, we're going to lose all of the hills. The challenge that that's creating is now it's killing all the bunnies. They don't have any more place, there's, there's no more flora and fauna for the small animals to eat. The challenge that's creating is now the coyotes are hunting in packs. They're hunting in packs in the communities, and they're using our green belts as game trails. Now they're hunting in twos and threes, they're separating the cats and the dogs, one of them gets their attention and the other one comes and eats them. They're also now stalking the children. As the children are walking through the neighborhood and in their backyard playing, the coyotes are stalking the kids. What I would like to see happen is I'd like to see us aggressively get the purple thistles out. The only way that's going to happen is to pull them out, get rid of them, and box, you have to package up the heads and get rid of them or else they're going to come back. They've already taken over all the hills behind Target. If you open up the windows here, this whole hill is almost gone, up and down Vista Hermosa, that one's probably 20% gone. It's going to continue. The last few years we've been here, it's just gotten worse and worse and worse. So I'd like to see that happen, if that's possible. And I also like to see you cull about half of the coyotes. If you don't, if we don't get rid of some of the coyotes, they're going to run out of food even more, and our kids are going to be more at risk. Okay? Thank you.
I would only say, you know, the coyotes and that, the plant. Do set up an appointment to talk to our city manager, who will guide you through the appropriate staff people.
Well, you guys know their phone numbers. So my job was to come here and let you know about it. All you have to do is look out the window. I lived in Africa for a lot of, for a number of years. Game trails are not the right thing to set up, and that's what we've set up here, unfortunately.
All right. Thank you.
Warren Vedrine, followed by Suzanne Ruiz, followed by Angela Watts, followed by Donna Vedrine. Warren?
Okay, I'm a scientist, so when I'm confused about something, I tend to do research. I was confused about Grants Pass. I did some research. What I found was a surprise, not at all what I expected. So I'm a little surprised that I am here to promote Grants Pass as a good example and of a way forward for my own city, San Clemente. So what lessons can we learn? Well, we know all about the Supreme Court case, but what have they been doing? In 19, in 2021, they, with the, with the support of the city council, a tiny house housing was set up and opened and is running to this day. It, it provides housing, very small housing, an address, a door that locks. It's got a low bar for entry, so you're not quizzing these people about everything before you let them in. On the other hand, there are rules, so some of them don't stay there. And the other thing that's happening is that 40, this is half an acre site, and 40% of it is devoted to office space for social services. So there's a very strong social services component to that project. And the good news is they're graduating people. So it's, it looks like it may go to what I've seen and a few other things I've looked at, which is about 70% mainstreaming from, from what they're doing. The other thing is that this year, Grants Pass, the city council unanimously passed approvals for another larger tiny house establishment. They are really working on this. And it's not dump them in the desert, it's not whack-a-mole, it is a real approach to the problem. So I, I plead, I ask you to take a close look at this and follow their example.
Thank you.
Suzanne Ruiz, followed by Angela Watts, followed by Donna Vedrine, followed by Lois McNichol.
Hi, council members. I'm so sorry, I came dressed, not for the occasion, but I was working and got a mishap with my refrigerator. Anyway, I'm here tonight to see what the vote will be on the illegal taco carts.
You know, if this is an item that's on the agenda, you have to speak on that item as opposed to open communications.
Well, I just want you to know, it's now been replaced with people that are now panhandling in the same exact locations. So.
Well, if you want to speak to that, if you want to speak at the carts, we have that on the agenda, and you can come and speak on that.
Yes, I know. I know. So what, what item is that?
That is item.
Ten A.
I think it's the next item.
Oh, the next item. Okay, I'll be back.
All right. Make sure you have your card in for that. Okay.
Angela Watts, followed by Donna Vedrine, followed by Lois McNichol.
Hi, council members. I'm Angela Watts, a San Clemente City Council candidate for District 3. But I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen, neighbor, and parent due to the stabbing across the street from our elementary school, Las Palmas, at Maxburg Park just two weeks ago. This is deeply troubling, not only for the safety of those directly involved, but for the entire neighborhood, especially the families and children who uses this and attend Las Palmas Elementary School. Now, I have stood before you numerous times to raise concerns about the escalating gang activity at Maxburg Park. Despite repeated warnings and pleas for action, the situation continues. We cannot afford to wait any longer. The safety of our community and children are at stake, and we must take decisive action now. Now, our sheriff's department are amazing, they have quick action. Now, we need to help and assist them. We need to work with our sheriff's department to build out our gang task force that can not only combat the gangs, but can eliminate them in San Clemente. We can work with state and federal agencies to secure grants and funding for these types of programs. Now, I would love to also see a sheriff's headquarters somewhere in the city where this action is happening. I have learned that the sheriffs are hanging out at another private school because they don't have somewhere to go where it is in town. They need somewhere to go to the bathroom, get fed, and be in the action, not up here. So I urge city council to take immediate action now as violence in our community is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Donna Vedrine, followed by Lois McNichol, followed by Louise Herbert.
Good evening. My name is Donna Vedrine. Tonight I am speaking as a member of Citizens Climate Lobby and Education. Electrification is the key to our energy future. We are talking to people in their communities about electrifying their homes. Two years ago, Congress passed a bill to make clean energy more accessible and affordable with the Inflation Reduction Act. Fossil fuels are literally prehistoric. Electric cars and appliances guarantee our energy use will automatically become cleaner as our electrical supply becomes greener. More, more indoor pollution is caused by burning natural gas. Particulate pollution is the root cause of most lung and circulatory disease. Electrifying helps ensure your home is a safe haven rather than a safety hazard. Outdated fossil-fueled appliances use energy less efficiently, which drives up your energy usage and your bills. When you electrify, your appliances will assure clean indoor air and save you money. The Inflation Reduction Act means that adding home electrification comes with big subsidies. An EV charger earns a 30% tax credit, up to $1,000. A new EV earns a $7,500 tax credit, and a used EV earns a $4,000 tax credit. A new electrical panel means you get a $4,000 upfront discount and a tax credit of $600. Electric wiring in your home comes with up to $2,500 upfront discount with a 30% tax credit up to $600. Electrify, your wallet will thank you. Other benefits of clean renewable energy include jobs and economic growth throughout California, reduced local pollution, and cleaner, healthier air. Powering California, the most populous and prosperous state in the country, with 100% clean renewable energy, is bold and achievable. In September of 2023, this council... In September of 2023, this council voted to update the city's climate action plan. I applaud you. By addressing climate policy responsibly, we improve our resiliency to the effects of worsening climate impacts. Updating the climate action plan keeps us in alignment with best practices and key policies that are proven effective. Let's hold ourselves accountable and create meaningful change, guaranteeing a thriving future for all, including our children and our grandchildren. I have materials in the back for you to review. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lois McNichol, followed by Louise Herbert, followed by Brian Pitt.
Hi. Well, I'm just here to bring to the city council's attention, because I know that you've all been wanting to be more engaged with the public. So I thought I'd let you know what the public had to say. One member stated, it was his first time at a city council meeting, and instead of feeling welcomed, instead of feeling like he could speak, instead of feeling like this was a place to exchange ideas and opinions, instead, he recused himself, did not speak, and made the comment that he felt that this was an old boys' club. Because basically, it was all of the council members speaking to one another, but none of the council members, because of the Brown Act, can speak to the people who are voicing their own opinions. So that was one thing that I thought you should know, since you do speak about wanting to be engaged with the public. And that is a one person who had only been to one city council meeting, and that was his first impression of you. Another thing that I would like to know more about is what is being done with our access to the San Onofre Bridge, to the, our access to the San Onofre Bridge, beach? Because I understand that at the end of August, that that access will come to an end, and I don't hear anybody speaking about that. We are speaking about beaches, we are speaking about sand replenishment, but we are not talking about that. And that is something that I feel has been really just left out of the entire conversation.
Well, thank, thank you. Just, just for clarification, to the people that are here in the audience, unfortunately, the Brown Act doesn't let us communicate with something that's not on, about something that's not on the agenda. So oftentimes, people come here and they raise an issue, and they wonder why we don't talk about it. It's because we go to jail. It's illegal to bring up most of that stuff and address a new item that's not on the agenda because of the state laws. So I understand that it's, it might be disheartening. I don't think we're ever going to change the, the state law, but it's not us, it's not our, our laws, it's the state laws that puts all these conditions on us. Next speaker.
Louise Herbert, followed by Brian Pitt.
Good evening. I'm Louise Herbert, and I've been a member of this community for over 41 years. This evening, my comments are for you, Councilwoman Loeffler. Your honesty and integrity have become very dismantled by your decision to run for city council in this upcoming election. You stood here before the members of the council, to your left and right, and made a promise to both them, as well as our community, that you would not run for another upcoming election, that whoever was to be appointed should not run for the next cycle. And for two of you, it was a sticking point, that anybody who was going to be appointed should have already said they would not run for city council. So it brings me to this. You have changed your mind, and I don't believe that it, now being a city of districts, has any play in this. Whether we're a city of districts or at large, your word is your word, or it's not. I don't know how anybody in our town would want to trust somebody who stood here and repeatedly said during the appointment questioning and during your stump speech that you had no intention of running. It's extremely disappointing, and it's dishonest. And I wonder where your moral compass is? Or has it been dismantled as well by ego and power? You have lied both to the city members, the voters, and to your fellow council members. And I find that very disheartening, dishonest, and poor representation for our council members. Thank you, and our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Brian Pitt.
Brian?
Chris, Rick, how are you doing, council members? Mayor, Picker, Goodall, thank you. Andy, I know I've reached out to you. My name's Brian Pitt. I'm a local citizen here in San Clemente. I live in Toledo. The topic I'm bringing to the awareness of the group, and some of you already know as I've reached out and had meetings, is my family developed the empty lot across from the pier and bought the vacant lot back in 2008. It took them about eight years working with the city council, going through a lot of lawsuits with the local residents that had buildings in the area, to get the property developed, which really was a very financial hardship on my family. A year ago, a year and a half ago, my father passed away from Parkinson's disease. The building was built, and we've been having quite a lot of issues at the entrance of our residential building. It's a multi-use directly across from the pier. Our CUP four that was approved by the council members back in '09, through multiple meetings with Michael Luna, an architect who's done quite a few buildings in the area, was all agreed upon through multiple meetings, back and forth, et cetera. That conditional use permit to develop the property was followed by my family, and we now have a retail store, which is under 800 square feet, does not meet the 1,000-square-foot threshold, to have a restaurant at the, at the Pier Bowl. This is a beautiful community. The Pier Bowl is a very beautiful entrance to our corridor, to our San Clemente community. I'm not sure if people are aware, but there's been a lot of public documentation of residents, people who live in the community, Marines, children, grandparents, you name it. Over 300-plus one-star review write-ups on Yelp. San Clemente Life has quite a few as well. And essentially, they're all complaining about the behaviors of a current tenant by the business name of Catarinas. Catarinas currently has a application with the Planning Division to change the zoning of that building, and has been operating out of compliance with the CUP for at least five years. We've brought this to the attention of the city. I think we might be making some headway with this. There is a hearing on September 5th. They're serving alcohol on the public sidewalk, they're serving alcohol on the street parklet, which was offered to them on the public sidewalk, and paying a lease to the city on our public street. And most importantly, the courtyard, which is covered, and now has a fence permitted in there somehow, was to be open to the public. It was a public benefit for the citizens of San Clemente. It was to be beach-serving, it was to be, get a food and head out to the beach, people could hang out at the bus stop. Well, that's been completely changed at this point, taken over by tenants, who are now operating a full-scale business of a restaurant, which we are asking the city of San Clemente to reinforce the codes that were required to develop the property and enforce the CUP, and that would require them to be retained back to a takeout storefront and no longer control the frontage of the building, the sidewalk, and the street. And I hope we can get your support.
Thank you for your comments.
That's all we have for oral communications. So next up, motion, waiving reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances.
Do I hear a motion?
Sub moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous?
carries five votes. Next item on the agenda, consideration of agendizing items requiring immediate action.
Yeah, I have one item that needs immediate action, and it's, it's, it's a, a loss, a writ that was filed by Zen Wu against the city of San Clemente, and another candidate responded. And I don't know if Zen Wu is here tonight, or, or, no?
Mayor, maybe, maybe you should preface, you had said before, we can't talk about things not on the agenda, and now we're talking about it, so maybe you can set, let's set the standard for why we might be able to talk about it.
Well, let's, we have to agendize this. We were served with it, we need immediate action. We have two options right now. We could either agendize it for, and go into closed session, or we can discuss it at this meeting. It's our choice, or we could do nothing, I guess, but we have to discuss it.
Mr. Mayor, would you mind if I just read the standard?
Let's talk about the standard, yes.
So, under the government code, specifically the Brown Act, the city council can discuss items not on the agenda if two-thirds of the members vote that there is a need to take immediate action, and that the need for action came to the attention of the agency after the agenda was posted. So I can represent that this matter did come to the attention after the agenda was posted, and there is an immediate need for the city council to give direction to the city attorney about whether and what action to take with respect to this lawsuit.
Okay. But there's two, two questions, whether we discuss this here, which we could, or whether we do it in closed session, or whether we discuss it at all. So I don't know if...
Well, the first question would be whether the city council wants to...
Discuss it at all.
Make, someone wants to make a motion to add an item to the agenda.
I'll make a motion, we add this item to the agenda.
Second?
And now, do we need to discuss?
We want to discuss it, right?
Can discuss the motion?
Let's discuss the motion now.
I'm fine with this. Is this where we discuss whether to put it into closed or to open, or do we do that?
To discuss it at all.
Well, let's just discuss whether we address this issue and put it on the agenda.
I'm fine putting it on the agenda.
All right. I am too, so is there anything?
What is the deadline to respond, from the city's perspective?
We don't know when the lawsuit was filed. If it was filed on the 14th, our response would be due on Friday. Because of the tight election code deadlines, the court will act before August 30th. It is most likely to set a hearing date either late this week or early next week, to decide the matter on the merits.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like we need to discuss...
We need to discuss it.
Direction, because this is a pending lawsuit that is against the city.
Court lack before our next meeting.
Right. And, and look, this is something that's time-sensitive too, because it has to do with candidates that are running, and so, yeah, I think we should, we should agendize this. So I can support the motion.
All right, so, well, we'll...
Call for the vote?
Call for the question?
Call for the question.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, so it is on the agenda, we can discuss it.
Well, I would recommend that the city council now place it somewhere on the agenda. So you decided that there wasn't a need for, need for immediate action, I would now recommend that you decide where on the agenda to place it.
Is there any preference of any...
Well, city attorney, can we, can we discuss this in closed session, given that it has to do with litigation?
Yes, it would be my recommendation to discuss it in closed session, but you don't have to.
Why don't we move it to the end, so that we don't delay anything else?
So after item 12, oral communications, part two, or after item 14? Like, right before adjournment?
Just say right before adjournment.
Okay.
14E, I'll second Chris's motion.
All right.
Just a friendly recommendation, if you place it between B and C, and then have the city attorney report after that, if there was any reportable action, I would be able to do that coming out of closed session.
That's a good point, yeah.
I'll make a friendly amendment, that we, we move it to 14, is it going to become C now?
Say between B and C.
With city attorney being D and E?
B1, B2.
B2? Okay, that we make it item 14B2.
All right, I'll second.
Accepted. All right.
Okay, closed session report, city attorney.
Thank you. On the closed session, item A1, the city council met in closed session. There was direction given and no reportable action. City council also met in closed session on item A2. There was direction given and no reportable action. Thank you.
Staff communications? I don't believe we have any staff communications today. Let's see, next item on the agenda is sidewalk vending enforcement and impoundment practices.
Hi, good evening, mayor and members of the city council. My name is Danielle Sorhan. I'm the code compliance manager, and tonight I'm here to present our findings and recommendations regarding sidewalk vending enforcement impoundment practices. So a little bit of the background, the city council requested staff to review sidewalk vending enforcement and impoundment practices in other Southern California cities due to rising complaints and operational challenge. So our current regulations, we enforce under the municipal code, section, chapter 5.50, and that focuses primarily on permits, locations, and fines. Some of the identified challenges is current state law limits effective enforcement, and existing city regulations and resources do not provide a mechanism for impoundment of equipment. So here you see two different photos of unpermitted sidewalk vendors. Those were taken here in town. So in our review, we chose the cities of Anaheim, Long Beach, Fontana, Orange, and Lake Forest. The information was gathered through a review of discussions, reviewing the municipal code, and just analysis, analysis of enforcement outcomes. Focus was placed on fines and penalties, impoundment procedures, and operational logistics such as staffing and equipment. So our key findings from the review is fines and penalties, escalating fines starting at 100 and increasing to 1,000 was, all the cities employed those fines. Impoundment procedures, they were typically triggered by serious safety violations, lack of permits, or non-compliance after warnings. The retrieval processes required proof of ownership and fee payment, and then the appeals mechanisms were typically between 10 and 30 days. So some of the operational considerations is it requires two officers for retrieval and loading of the carts. Trucks need to be equipped with lifts. It requires secure storage facilities, dismantlers for processing unclaimed carts, and storage location and holding requirements are typically anywhere from 30 to 90 days. Enforcement challenges, vendors frequently resume operations at the same locations after impoundment. Insufficient vendor identification complicates the process of issuing administrative citation. Impoundment measures appear to have limited impact on some types of vendors, and so through my discussions with other enforcement officers in these selected cities, they all shared with me that not one cart had been reclaimed, not one appeal filed out of all the cities. And so it's just good information. Recommendations, so our recommendations are to continue to enhance the park ranger code compliance presence and strategically position officers in areas frequently used by vendors. Our second is explore methods to disrupt unpermitted vending activities, such as temporary barriers and signage. And then the last, if unpermitted sidewalk vending increases, or if current enforcement strategies prove ineffective, consider amending the municipal code and establishing impoundment That concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
All right. Well, I have a couple of questions. The two locations that you cited, or had photographs, where were those two? Do you know?
One was on Camino de Mars.
It was Mars.
And the other one was on Avenida Pico.
Okay. And are those regular sites, that we've seen people there?
Well, you know, I, I checked the stats on this, and since 2022, we've only had 12 cases, two of which were at Camino de Mars, and two were at Avenida Pico. We don't tend to have a lot of cases. We're very responsive and proactive in our enforcement. They are considered a priority one, they were moved to priority one, and we proactively patrol the streets and address them. And we proactively patrol the streets and address them quickly.
Do we have enough rangers? I mean, because I think what you're suggesting is that we have rangers out there monitoring. If someone shows up, the rangers stay there until they leave, essentially?
That's correct.
Do we have enough rangers to do that?
Yes. More is always better, because we do have other responsibilities throughout the city. However, you know, we'll do what needs to be done, and if we need to adjust staffing and make other arrangements, bring somebody in on their day off, we'll do that.
Okay. And Rick?
So the strategy is, you made aware of a cart, and you send, say, a park ranger there, and you say it's a Priority One call. So would that usurp now, they can go and hang there, they don't have to go close a bathroom up, or do something like that?
Well, it depends on where it's located. So if it's in the parks and beach areas, it's park rangers. If it's on public property, it's code compliance. But we often work together on a lot of these things. So if the park rangers encounter a vendor, they'll oftentimes call code as well to assist them.
And so is there phone number, the public can call to report this?
Yes, there is. If you go on the city's website, like, I think it's the first or second down is the park ranger's number that's there for code compliance. You can call the number at any time, and that information will get inputted into our CRM system, which the code officers have real-time access to out in the field with their cell phones.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, just a comment. We've had quite a few calls lately in the Stater Brothers area over by Los Marias, and the problem is that, I've observed from monitoring, what staff's been doing is the people there don't have an ID, they can't get a citation because they don't have any identification, and they may leave, but they come right back. And if they leave, they'll come back the next day to the same location. So it's kind of problematic. So I have recommendations after we've heard all the information, but it's a growing issue, a growing issue.
Yes.
Question, and maybe this is for Matt, but by impoundment, we're talking about seizure of their merchandise, or the equipment, I guess?
Yes.
Correct.
What's the legal process, I guess, that we would use to seize this? I mean, normally, right, you need a warrant, or you need an exception to the warrant requirement. I'm just trying to understand that option, because we may want to authorize that option. Matt, you want to help out?
Yeah, staff's review included looking at what other cities that are currently doing this have on the books, not looking at the legality of seizing equipment. So that would be a question for our legal counsel.
Matt? Normally, the process is, I'm sorry, Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Normally, the process for impounding is notice, absent some sort of emergency circumstance, like perishable goods, for example, and then an opportunity to move it, storage that item for reclaiming. As Danielle said, that's often the not reclaiming it. And in that case, after you hold it for a certain period of time, that's set by law, then that item is destroyed, if they don't claim it. So that's usually the process for doing it. And you're right, Councilman, absent, a warrant is usually involved, absent, again, certain exceptions to that. The challenge of sidewalk vending, if I may, is that state law changed a number of years ago, maybe about five years ago, and state law completely controls what we can do at the local level. It preempts local control. So it says we can do XYZ, and it's a very tightly written state law, and it's XYZ, it's those things. And so cities are pushing up against that a little bit more in different places to try to address some of these challenges that Councilman No Block pointed out, for example, very accurately. And, but we are greatly constrained by what state law allows us to do.
So you're saying you put a notice that says, if you don't move this, we're going to take possession of it, and then we'll let you know where to, you know, what to do to follow up, and if you don't follow up, we'll consider it abandoned and dispose of it, I guess?
That's correct. If the city were to have, we'd have to explore the legality of that and have an ordinance allowing us to do that first.
Okay. And then we'd have to have a storage location for all of that equipment, and way to dispose of it, and way to move it there, and yeah.
Right. Equipment as opposed to food. Food, you obviously don't store.
I just, hold on. Do we, I forgot that. Do we have comments?
We do have speaker cards, yes. Would you like to hear them now?
Can we finish?
Let's finish our quick questions, yeah.
So, just in your assessment, hearing all these things, what cost-benefit analysis on this is, you know, the cost-benefit of storing these things, impounding these things, going through that whole process versus cost of having a presence there and making it, let's say, uncomfortable for them to be there? And any of you can, can respond to this. What suggestions would you have?
Well, I'll refer to staff's recommendation on this. This has definitely become an issue that we've received some complaints about. You cannot hear me, or you can't?
No, you can.
Okay. I'll refer to staff's recommendation on this, in that we know that there have been some recent complaints, and that over the past two years, while we've only had 12 cases, this is something that has sprung up a little bit more recently, especially over the summer months. But in our recent experience of addressing these through staff presence, and with the current work that we're doing to explore additional disrupting opportunities, staff is comfortable recommending that we continue with those actions, because those are more beneficial in terms of a cost-benefit analysis to implementing an ordinance to allow for the seizure of these properties. With that said, should our current efforts not be fruitful, staff is fully supportive of investigating this further with council direction that we would bring back at such a time that, when it's clear that we need additional tools to address this.
Those photos, were they on private property, or were they both on public property, where they were set up?
Public property.
Yeah, private property is not sidewalk vending. Sidewalk vending is only on, on public property. So any types of activities like this that are on private property would be dealt with regardless of state law that protects public sidewalk vending. But we would also do a secondary enforcement on the property owners dealing with the zoning violation, beyond just the business license violations of the vendors.
So let me, let me ask you a question. If we go this route of, you know, trying with our rangers to address it, send them out there, observe, and disrupt the business, and if it doesn't work, the restrictions put on this, on us by the state, do they still give us enough tools to address the issue? Or what's your best assessment of that?
Oh, boy, Mayor. I have some pretty strong thoughts on that. But I think that the tools the city gives us, or the state gives us, are very limited, but there are always solutions. And there have been some cities, I'll give you an example. One city in Northern LA County was so fed up with its, I'll call them frequent flyer sidewalk vendors, the ones that just kept doing it and coming back, notwithstanding all these other code interventions, that they sued them in court and got an injunction to stop them from doing it. And they did it around state law, because state law prohibits the municipal code in certain respects, but not state law, and this is a nuisance under state law. So there are other solutions. We just have to pull different tools out of the toolbox.
Okay. All right.
I had a similar question regarding the state law. You mentioned that state law allows X, Y, and Z. Our staff report didn't have any of the state law issues. It does have our, our ordinance, which does prohibit sidewalk businesses that are unlicensed. My question to you is, if we had an ordinance that said, an unlicensed business that impacts public health and safety, resulting in an immediate impoundment of the equipment, would that be in violation of XYZ in your opinion of state law?
Potentially. That's something where a memo would be very helpful for the council's consideration. But I'll tell you, state law says basically that there, state law says we cannot, for example, criminally prosecute this, they decriminalize illegal sidewalk vending. It does allow us to still require business licenses, which is a generally applicable law for every business in our city. They're not exempt from that, and we have ways to enforce the lack of a business license. And because you're a sidewalk vendor, you don't have special status being exempt from other generally applicable laws like that, for example.
Yeah, the reason I ask is Anaheim, for example, has had it for 200 carts impounded in the last three months, and I guess the staff report was, none of them were redeemed. So I guess it sounds like at least Anaheim's not bumping up against the state law with the problem, so.
Yeah, it seems like, I think more and more cities are going to that, that model.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
All right. Any other questions? All right, well, sit tight, because we may have some afterwards. Let's hear from the public.
Suzanne Ruiz, followed by Louise Herbert.
I don't have any recent pictures. Thank you very much for having me back at the podium here. I don't have recent pictures, but what they've done now is they've, they know, this is organized crime. I mean, I am telling you, they know the routine. They know when code enforcement's on and when they're not on. They know your schedule, people. And Danielle, Suzanne Ruiz, I'm the one that spoke with you. I'm the one that's been on top of this.
You have to address the city council.
Along with, with my husband and other people that have come to me, what are we going to do? The bottom line, Danielle, is that others...
Hold on, you have to address the city council.
The whole council, excuse me. Most importantly, I get time back, then, thank you. Most importantly, there are other cities that are doing things, like Santa Monica, they don't put up with any of it. Do you want to be like Little Two One here in San Clemente with vending carts? I mean, literally two feet apart from each other, selling everything from knickknacks to food to beverages, taking away from legitimate businesses who received and had to get permits, licensing, and go through all kinds of health background checks, okay? This is, these are people from Guatemala, Mexico, wherever. They are from the south border, okay? And they are not legal. I'm so sorry you don't have a projector here, but you have seen these pictures. Matter of fact, I took that one right there, though it was on a screenshot above. And I'm just saying to you this, here's another guy, Washington State. Absolutely, none of these calls are local people receiving the code enforcement calls. They're outsourced people to places like Texas, to places like, where else? Texas, Washington State. I find that to be amazing, that this hoodlum selling tamales and tacos came from Washington State. Does everybody see that? Sorry about that. Anyway, most importantly, nothing is a coincidence until it is, but most importantly, the health department, we've already called him, his name is Tom, he's the boss. He says, all I need is a representative from the board, code enforcement, down there, take the cart away, no problem. This doesn't have to be rocket science, and we don't have to throw tons of money at this, you guys. It's not legal, healthful, or anything. These people are dangerous. We don't know what's in their, their food, and most importantly, fentanyl's coming from China, coming to our California borders, being dispersed all over the country, but mostly California. Please do something. Don't, don't, don't make it so expensive that we have to always have, outsource this, outsource this. We should be recruiting retired police officers that want to take these emergency calls, that know, you know, anybody retired, that really are civil servants, you know what I'm saying? Good citizens. Everybody can have a background check. I had a licensed daycare facility, okay? And I had many licensed daycare checks.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, all right. You know what to do.
Louise Herbert?
Thank you once again, Louise Herbert, 41-year resident of San Clemente. I spent over 27 years working in the industry of production of events. I was the show manager of the San, of the Southern California Home and Garden Show, big nine-day event at the Anaheim Convention Center with over 85,000 attendees. I owned and operated my own home shows in Ontario. Let me think, Anaheim, Ontario, Palm Springs, Las Vegas, and Arizona. Each one of those locations have different rules and requirements for vending. So, two years ago during the past election cycle, I contacted the State Board of Equalization regarding the horrifically ugly, not just food things, but horrifically ugly political sign pop-ups and paraphernalia. I found out that the State Board of Equalization, the gentleman who owns all the Orange County and San Diego ones owns something like 50 licenses for these god-awful-looking pop-ups. I again saw one just last week, and sent the photos that were over by Ralph's on Camino de los Marias, and sent those to Paul Pie. Unfortunately, he probably doesn't like my emails, but somebody else did respond to me, and they provided a license for that vendor. The thing is, is that the vendor is set up on the public sidewalk, and that precludes walking in either direction. There was one of your pictures that showed the setup where they were placed off of the sidewalk, so that consumers could come up to the booth, the front of the booth, without precluding the walkway. And that is the legal way to do it. The other thing I ask is that even though you may have a license for that vendor, are you reporting to the State Board of Equalization that they are licensed with you? Because you have to, so that the State Board of Equalization can take the taxes that are garnered during any sales here and allocate them back to our city. That is required at every single public event. My husband and I worked with every State Board of Equalization, as well as the health departments. If that health department license is not presented at that booth, it's an immediate shutdown. I worked with Anaheim, all those towns I mentioned, I worked with, directly with the Board of Health. And if they were not in compliance, I was fined. Thus, you should be fined. And because you've given the permit, then you should be fined if you have not proven that they have a health board permit. Thank you.
No more speakers.
So we have either a motion or discussion. You want, some of them want to...
I would suggest that we modify our existing, ask staff to modify our existing ordinance to allow the, either the sheriff's department, code enforcement, or our rangers to identify illegal vending operations on public property, and if they're not licensed, to impound the equipment, to allow a redemption period, if they can prove ownership with a redemption with a fine of, let's say, I think some of the other cities were up to $1,000 for redemption, $1,000 redemption fee. And if they're not redeemed within 30 days or appeal of any kind filed, that the equipment be discarded.
Yeah, I appreciate staff, and I know it's problematic to deal with these things, but I talked to police up in Laguna Beach, and they actively enforced it, they enforced the carts, and by enforcing it, the problem disappeared, because once they know they're going to come in there and they're just going to lose their business, they stop coming. That's probably why they're down here.
That's the goal, that's the goal.
That's why they're down here. So I, I just don't see having a park ranger going out and standing there and doing nothing is really going to deter anything. I think we need to be something stronger than that, so...
We can't, we can't have any people in the audience speaking, please. Now, please, you get your time to speak, and then you can't speak after that.
This Ruiz, I'm trying to support you here. So, yes, I agree with Steve. I think we need to adopt something a little bit stronger.
I think that'll solve the problem, and that's my suggestion. I'll make a motion where it's appropriate.
Okay. Mark? So we're making this, you know, about one vendor, maybe two, and it's something that we're dealing with, where we are appropriately going after them. They do stop, they, they have been responsive in one way or another, and will continue to be responsive. I'm sort of more of the idea that if this becomes a bigger issue, then, then we look at adding those components in. But right now, I just don't see in terms of the cost-benefit analysis for our city that we, we need to take additional steps on what we're already doing.
Okay. Let others speak.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, I, I generally agree with Mark on this. I mean, I'm all for enforcement, and, you know, this is not only a health and safety problem, but actually hurts our local businesses too, and we should be collecting the taxes of people that are doing businesses. But I would defer to staff's expertise on this and staff's recommendation to take a more measured approach, given there certainly will be some costs associated with the, the steps of, of going to impoundment. So, I would like to see, and have staff come back with, with a report about how the, the staff recommendation worked in terms of moderating this, this activity before we go to the next step.
I'd just like to ask, what, what, how do we decide what the next step is? You say there's one or two, which seems like we could probably enforce on those pretty, does it become three or four? What's the number, when we have six out there a night? Is that, is that when we come back?
Again, I would defer to staff on that. Their, their recommendation is to, to let them act and then come back and let, let us know if there's been progress or not.
Yeah, this is really kind of a tool in our toolbox. Historically, I'm aware of the last month or so, we've had multiple calls in the Los Marais area from not just one or two, but from multiple, multiple vendors. Their approach, they have no, no identification, they, if it's a private citizen or even one of our city people, they'll just basically shine you on. Occasionally, they leave, and they come right back. And, and then they'll ultimately leave again. So, it's a multiple, I think having a toolbox to say, "If you're here without a license, we have the power and we will impound your equipment." When the word gets out, I think that'll solve the problem. It can, as, as Mark and Chris have both mentioned, it is being solved now by repeatedly going out there and communicating, but until our people get out there, my understanding is these people are on the street for hours and hours before a citizen will call code enforcement and say, "Are you aware that this is going on?" I just think it's a tool in the toolbox that I think will help solve the problem.
And by the way, I would, I would think differently if we had three times as many park rangers, which I hope we do at some point. I think this is another reason why we need to keep on expanding this program. I just think with the limited resource that we have now, it's just not practical to, to keep doing that. Then they can't go close the beaches, they can't do the other things. So, I hope sometime we, we will have the resources to do just, just this, to compel them to go just by, just by hanging there.
Yeah, all right.
On that same note, I just wondered, the exact same thing of having resources, do we have the resources right now in the same regard to, to do this impoundment? And this is an added cost. So, either, either way, we need more resources.
So, so let me ask the staff again. You've heard our concerns about resources, whether putting a ranger out there is gonna work. What's, give me more background on, on what we're seeing right now, how long it's been going on, whether we think, you know, this, this will work, or you're gonna have to be back in two weeks or four weeks and say, "No, we're gonna have to confiscate." Do you have an assessment on that?
So, I'll say, there are, there are more than two vendors that we're dealing with, but I would pick that number probably closer to, to 10 or so that we've, that we've dealt with, I'll say, more than once.
Let me just stop you there. When you say vendor, is this like an individual, or is this a company of, that has many carts? Or do we even know?
There are some operations that look similar to other operations that we, that we've seen with just different people. But at this point, we've had good success with the way that we're trying to enforce this, and we would like to enforce this in, in at least the near, the near-term future. I, it's not, it's not, in our experience, it's not going to be necessary to station somebody for four or five hours every single time that this occurs. Most of the time when we, when we go up to somebody, it's, and there's, I'll say this, there's a lot of what I wanna call more mom-and-pop shops, where they're not, they're not, this is not part of some larger enterprise. They just are somebody that came up with an idea to sell shaved ice down by the beach, and they didn't realize that we live in a, you know, a legal framework that requires business licenses and health permits. So, a lot of these vendors, they shut down very quickly once we, once we address them. There are a few that will need a little bit more time, but I'd rather have staff spend 12 hours with three or four different vendors in the next couple of weeks to get them trained to the, the idea that every time they come here, we're gonna stop their operations, we're gonna disrupt their operations first, before we, before we take on the, the additional burden of, of, of new processes, new procedures, new resource requirements, you know, another, another potential appeals process. We'd rather keep things simpler using existing resources.
So, let me ask you this. Let's say the Little League or the Girl Scouts say, "I'm gonna go up to the Park Del Mar and sell cookies and set up a stand."
Impound that stand.
They would be impounded?
They, absolutely. You know, I, we would, we would have, we would treat everybody similarly. With that said, we generally start with a warning and an opportunity to cure, we want voluntary compliance first. I don't know that the, the Girl Scouts of America would flagrantly disregard our, our repeated warnings, but should they, they would be subject to the same enforcement anywhere else.
You know, my niece set up a lemonade stand down at the pier a few years, before I was on council, many years ago, set up a lemonade stand down, stand down by the pier, and code enforcement came, let her know, "Hey, you can't sell lemonade here," and-
Did she pay her license?
She did not pay her license for that, so she, she gathered up her stuff, and, you know, took it back home, and, you know, that, that was a good learning experience.
Why don't we do this? Why don't I, I just, maybe we ought to just monitor this for a while. I know, I know that there's been activity on site, I know that the people come back. Generally, occasionally, there's a handler that kind of sets them up at the location and gives them the equipment, and rinses the equipment, takes a piece of the action. I, why don't we just ask, ask you to monitor this and report back to us in, let's say, two months, and let us know what's going on, what's your activity, before we modify our ordinance to give you those extra tools? I, I think it may be needed in the future, but you seem to be on it now, and I'd like to, I'd like to continue that effort to make sure that, you know, then, I don't think we need to station anywhere, anyone for hours waiting, but when the call comes in, we need to be responsive, and let's, let's see how it goes for the next few months.
I would prefer that method. I, I do think, I mean, if- I, I know and I'm aware that there's professional companies, maybe not in our city, that, you know, have, have one card after you impound one, they bring another one, so it must be a lucrative business. I, I don't know that they're here, I don't, maybe you could fill me in on that, or maybe it's more the mom-and-pop, and they're more likely to leave. And so, and particularly if we have aggressive enforcement, which is what we're all telling you we expect. And, and what I would want to make sure is that we have the resources, the, the rangers that, that can do that without interfering with their other activities out there, because they get called a lot in different directions. Is there, in your view, enough rangers to cover, you know, all the things that we've put on the plate?
Generally speaking, we could always use more rangers. Their task lists never get shorter. With that said, we, when these street vending operations tend to set up, we generally have code enforcement staff operating. They, code enforcement can enforce most of the municipal code anywhere in the city, even on parks. So, if this became an issue for park ranger staff, code enforcement staff could, would follow up and address it. In fact, one of the pictures that was shown had two park rangers and one code enforcement staff, and that one, it took a couple hours to get, get it taken care of, but it was a team effort, and I will say, it didn't take all, all of the staff the entire time to address it.
Mayor, I think I heard a motion from Steve to, to accept the staff recommendation with the-
Special report back in two months.
Special report back in two months.
Yeah, I'll make that motion of that effect.
With that, could, do you keep the stats weekly, whatever, available? If, if I wanted to look at two weeks from now, what the incidents were during that time, because there might be a recent, bring it back sooner.
I'd like to then report back in two months on, on this, what's happened in the, in the last two months regarding illegal card operations, and we can decide at that point if we want to take any further action. And that's my motion.
We have a motion.
Report back on October 1st.
And a second. No further discussion, hearing them, we'll, we'll take a vote on that. Are we voting electronically?
You can vote electronically, absolutely.
All right.
So, that's a motion by Councilmember Novak. We actually had a second by Councilmember Duncan, but we've got Lefler up here.
We'll strike his name.
Koff, why don't you do verbally just all in favor?
Can we do that, or is it?
Sure.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, it's unanimous.
Harry's 5-0.
All right. Next item on the agenda.
Introduction and First Reading of an Ordinance Regulating the Operation and Use of Electric Bicycles and Other Electric Transportation Devices in Finding the Ordinance Not Subject to the California Environmental Quality Act.
All right. Do we have a report on that?
Yes, we do. We're collecting our notes. Mayor, can we take a five-minute break?
Absolutely. Let's take a five-minute break. Give you time to get your notes. Give you time to get your notes.
Yes, introduction and first reading of an ordinance regulating the operation and use of electric bicycles and other electric transportation devices and finding the ordinance not subject to the California Quality, California Environmental Quality Act. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Danielle Sorahan, Code Compliance Manager. On May 7, 2024, the City Council directed staff to develop an ordinance regulating the operation and use of electric bicycles based on recommendations from the Public Safety Committee. The ordinance, if adopted, will amend the San Clemente Municipal Code to align with existing portions of relevant state laws, provide applicable definitions, describe enforcement procedures and penalties, and establish, as proposed by the Public Safety Committee, discussed by council on May 7th of 2024. In addition to the regulations proposed and initiated by the City Council, staff has included regulations in the proposed ordinance for the City Council's consideration, which are helmet requirements, direction of travel, compliance with safety standards, the responsibility of the parents, and the use of designated lanes. Staff recommends that council introduce and conduct the first reading of ordinance number 1778, regulating the operation and use of electric bicycles and other electric transportation devices in the city. This concludes staff presentation, and we are available for any questions.
All right. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
All right, then we'll go on to, you know, I'm going to start with, I think, Mark, you, you've expressed a lot of interest in bikes. You're a biker. You can, you can kick us off.
Before I kick us off, any questions?
Questions, yes.
I don't have any questions for the staff. I'm, I'm very excited with, with the ordinance that has come back. I think you listened to all of our recommendations. This, this looks like a fantastic piece. Once, once we're done with questions, I'll, I'll make some other comments, but yeah.
I had a brief question for staff, and that is, who has authority to issue citations for violations of the bike ordinance? Is it the sheriff, the code compliance, our park rangers? And if the rangers don't, what do we need to do to give them authority to be able to issue citations?
So these ordinance, this ordinance is going to be primarily enforced by the sheriffs because they, they make traffic stops. However, the code compliance and the park rangers and the lifeguards would all have the authority to issue citations. But generally speaking, these are moving violations that would be addressed by sheriff's deputies.
Yeah, the reason I ask is, I know the beach trail is shut down now, but our enforcement effort was basically hollering at someone as they race by you on the electric bike, that you're in violation of the city ordinance. The police would have to stop a bicyclist to issue a citation. Car park rangers simply do the same thing from standing position or not flashlights necessarily, but be able to, be able, have the ability to issue citations because every, every block, their bikes generally tend to stop at a stoplight or a stop sign occasionally, not always. And, and it could be enforced that way. I guess what I'm seeing is, I think enforcement sends a, a big message, and I just want to make sure that we go, I hope the sheriff is proactive in, in doing this, but if they're not, I want to make sure that our rangers also have the ability and are encouraged to do the same.
So on the beach trail, the, that, that, those are the, those are the types of public areas that city staff would be able to deal with. On public right-of-way, that would be entirely the Orange County Sheriff's Department, and that's what's built in to Title 10, generally speaking. But on public park property, the park rangers would be able to address it.
The, the issue I hear most about, and I think I hear about it every day, is that, you know, sort of gangs, they call them, of rogue bikers going down the street next to, next to cars, doing wheelies down Pico, not obeying the traffic signs. All that, it will still remain within the jurisdiction of the Sheriff's Department. But I'm just not sure. We don't address that issue at all. It's just more enforcement if, if it takes place. And my understanding is that the sheriffs really won't enforce a lot of that activity, mostly out of fear, you know, of, of, you know, if they enter into a pursuit with a child on a bike, you know, it's a danger, more of a danger to, to, to that kid than anyone else. But what's your understanding of our policy or there and our enforcement?
I have heard Captain Christian make statements to that effect, wanting to weigh the, the benefit of additional enforcement against the potential ramifications from these types of encounters. But as far as what they may or may not enforce, I would defer to, to him. When this was reviewed by the Public Safety Committee, he made a comment about just wanting to weigh that type, type of cost benefit with new regulations. But, and I would definitely want his opinion stated here. It didn't sound like that, that none of these new regulations would be enforced. They were just additional tools that, in the right circumstances, may be applied.
Yeah. Sure, sure. You, you don't have to, but do you want, do you want to opine on that? I, I, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but it is.
Are you, Mayor, you're talking about the sort of just dangerous behavior on the bikes and menacing behavior, that kind of thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, Adam said it great. I did opine on, on balancing the safety of, of the riders and kids. I think a lot of the bad behavior we see on the bicycles today are the e-bikes. So I did opine on that. However, that doesn't prohibit us from attempting to make enforcement stops. Matter of fact, we've been very proactive lately. We've had enforcement measures with additional motors coming into the town to help our motors out and doing specific e-bike enforcement. Over the last, we concentrated like six days in the last month and a half or so. We've been successful at issuing sites from no bicycle helmets to multiple riders. Some of that has bled into, I won't call them e-bikes, but the e-motocycles. And that's typically where you see the youth running from law enforcement. We have had officers go in pursuit that have been terminated rather quickly because of the danger involved in that. And then we've had various enforcement strategies where it didn't involve a pursuit, didn't even involve a stop, but basically approaching somebody on a street or parking lot open to public access where we've confiscated numerous electric motorcycles. But we've probably issued roughly about 60 citations in those six enforcement activities that we've done.
Yeah, it's just that the, the volume of emails I, I get on that issue, I don't know if you get the same way.
Get a lot as well.
They're increasing. It, it's not going down, and, and people are looking for solutions to, to this issue. And, you know, there's not always a perfect solution, but, you know, we need your, we need your help. I think the public's, you know, making that plea too to, to, to help with that enforcement effort.
They are, and we're listening.
Safely, of course.
Of course. And we're dealing with it now with various sections of the vehicle code, but this does give us some more tools for some of the other activity that's not addressed in the vehicle code.
Do you know if this is a growing concern just here in San Clemente or another?
It is not unique to San Clemente. It's, it happens all over a lot of the contract cities we have, even outside of Orange County. I do think that being a beach community, we, we do see a prevalence of the e-bike usage and a lot of the bad behavior that's going along with the e-bike usage. But that being said, there's plenty of e-bike riders, kids and adults alike that do ride these, these vehicles appropriately and within the law.
No, no, you, you see, I mean, I think generally, you know, most of the kids out there, you see them with their helmets behaving properly, but there's always a few bad apples.
Yeah, and with enforcement and education, just spreading the word out goes a long way with just.
On that aspect of, of education, there's one part of the ordinance that talked about some sort of Saturday training for people that, that have a citation. Could either of you speak to, to that on, on what that will look like or what the, the plan is?
Adam, you want to take that one?
So, you know, in the ordinance, one of the alternatives to a citation is going to a, basically like a class to, you know, learn about the laws, you know.
Traffic school.
Traffic school, essentially, in lieu of having to pay fines. And so that's something that I believe the Public Safety Committee, as well as the Sheriff's Code and the Rangers, you know, we can work together to come up with a plan of how that exactly is going to look and maybe a certificate once they complete the class, you know, some kind of way to also appreciate them and, you know, hopefully spread the word throughout the community.
Great, excellent. And then on that education part, there was also part of the ordinance talking about the sale of e-bikes and working with the, our, our companies in town, our local companies that sell them. Could you speak a little bit more to that on, on what that will do for the public or what that will look like for those businesses?
I think it's, it's more about like accountability, right? That like this business and the rider, everyone's a stakeholder in this community, and if we're all committed to the safety and that these rules get provided to the rider, as well as hopefully some kind of, you know, information from the company advising them, you know, hey, these are serious rules, that that will benefit San Clemente, that kind of approaching it from multiple angles will hopefully, you know, help address a lot of these issues.
That's bullet point eight, is the right, the sales or rental agencies have to give a copy of the ordinance so that they know what all the rules are. I asked the question of staff earlier, real quick, if I could.
Can we let the sheriff go, go back?
Well, he might be able to answer this next question. Of the city-approved, bullet point seven is the, Mark asked the question about the city-approved e-bike safety courses. Are you aware of any courses that are available right now for people to complete if they get a citation to complete the adjudication of their ticket by completing a course?
No, I'm not aware of any courses that are out there like that.
Okay. I guess we have to identify those and locate those.
There's one in, what, Carlsbad or Oceanside?
I think there's an official one in Carlsbad, but I know that there's a gal in San Juan Capistrano who will bring these classes out. I don't know if it's official, official, but, you know, I, I think there's options. I think there's people out there that have the knowledge that are willing to put these kinds of things on just because it's such a serious issue.
I'm done with the, with the captain. If he, we can.
I have one more question for you. In terms of enforcement, are you working on some sort of like speed trap where you have one officer there, another officer in, in front? How does this enforcement look? Especially, you know, they, they are able to veer off and go other places. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so we'll just set up and we'll call them hotspots in the city where we've seen a lot of e-bike usage and some of the bad behavior. So they'll just kind of generate their enforcement efforts on those locations, make as many stops as they can or approach when, like I said, if they're in a business parking lot. We have seen them take off into trails, so we try to get up in the trails. So we'll have bicycle officers as well trying to assist where maybe a car or the motorcycles can't get. We've done that all.
Great.
Including the beach trail.
How, how often do you bring these out of city resources here? Do you have a routine, a regular program or is it scheduled like?
We, we've scheduled a few. It's not routine. We, we can handle a lot of it with in-house deputies, but it is nice to have, we have two motor officers in the city, so it's nice to be able to share resources with some of the other contract cities. So we'll bring, we'll open it up for other motorcycle cops to come down, assist us, and we do the same for them in their cities. So it's been very productive.
Victor's trying to find out when the patrols are so he can do his wheelies at the.
Yes.
Now, I did have, I did have one other question. How have we, maybe it's more for staff is, last week, we had, we had to respond to the county, and they wanted our, our ideas on e-bikes because they're either proposing or will propose this, a, a new county ordinance. How does this reconcile with what the county is doing and what the state is doing too?
I think really well. I had researched what the county was doing while, you know, researching this process, and I saw that, I think it was that grand, grand. Grand jury's.
The grand jury report last week, yeah.
And so I read it, I looked to other cities just to make sure ours was in alignment because one of the issues brought up in that grand jury report is that cities, most cities didn't have an ordinance, and if they did, there was some, you know, confliction between the vehicle code and the, and the ordinance. And I really feel like this will align quite well with the county ordinance and with our surrounding cities, you know, should they choose to adopt some kind of e-bike ordinance as well.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion or?
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
A question for the city staff. I don't know if it's Danielle or Adam. The, the last bullet point that's in the ordinance has to do with rental business regulations and, and requiring them to provide a, a copy of the regulations. That makes sense, right? Like, why, why are we not requiring the sales businesses to also provide it? It seems like in San Clemente, more people are buying them than renting them. So I, it seems like a pretty minor, minor thing.
Yeah, it's.
It's both.
Sale and rentals, sales slash rental.
Oh, it says rental business regulations. Then it says require all businesses.
No, well, unless you have a different, oh, you're reading an electronic copy, which.
That's in the staff report. Does the actual ordinance have both?
The version of the staff report we're looking at has sales slash the ordinance.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if, as long as it's all businesses that sell or rent, and that is what's in the ordinance, then it's good.
All right.
I have one, one question. I, I agree with the eight bullet points. There were a number of bullet points that were recommended by citizens, one of which I really like, hasn't been incorporated into the ordinance. I'd like to have our council consider it, and that is parental responsibility. It says that parents can't knowingly, you know, allow minors to violate and so forth. But it was recommended that they be responsible. I'd like to see a strict liability for parents if there's a, if there's a citation and it's not paid, that the parents are responsible somehow, that they, especially for their minor children. So it has not currently incorporated, but I'd like to see if there's an appetite to have a parental, a stronger parental responsibility.
My issue with that is I, I think it, it would take a lot more work than, than doing it tonight to figure out whether we can hold a parent strictly liable for the, I mean, I know it's a recommendation of one of the parents, but we have.
Well, we're, we're current, yeah. You may be right. Currently, the parents are referenced, and it says they'll not, they're not, they shall not authorize or knowingly permit a minor child. And then there's a payment provision and a, and a training provision. And I just, I just like, would see a stronger parental involvement. If, if this isn't the right time or if there's no appetite to do it.
Staff, do you have an opinion on that? Or have you looked at that? Or, or did, did the committee look at that?
Maybe that's a Matt question.
Or Matt, 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 maybe Matt, yeah.
To clarify that the ordinance does have a parental responsibility aspect, which.
It's not strict liability.
It's not strict liability.
There's a reference to them not knowingly doing it.
Correct.
That, that's not, it's pretty weak. Any parent would say, I didn't know. But if they're responsible, whether they knew not, or they, they should be responsible for minor children's conduct. That's, in the negligence law, that's the case.
So we have, we have discussed this, and if the, if it is the council's appetite for stronger language here, we do have something that I can read to you for inclusion. What I will say about this, the way it's written now, we wouldn't anticipate that this is, would be a section that would be utilized when kids are doing wheelies or things like that, but more for like more egregious violations, like purchasing an electric motorcycle and allowing their child to ride that on the streets. In that case, the, the parent would, at least moving forward, know that that vehicle would not be allowed on the streets because they would be provided a copy of the ordinance when that sale occurs. But if it's the council's intention to.
The, 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 the goal of the ordinance is to have calm and peaceful conduct on the streets. We've, 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 in a, in a soft way, said parents can't knowingly violate, and they should be involved. I'm just suggesting that the parents, whatever offense the child is involved in, that involves a fine, a fee or responsibility, that the parents are responsible for that. We're not going to go, Captain Christian's not going to go out and arrest a kid, but, but a citation will, for the parents, or the parents knowing that they're responsible might give them extra impetus to talk to their kids and make sure that they're actually conducting themselves properly. That's all I'm trying to get at. And this, Mayor, may not be the time to do it, but I'd like to see that if possible. Matt, do you have a thought on that?
Comment on that if, to the extent you.
Sure, Mayor. Yeah, actually, staff asked me about this before. I don't see any reason we can't do that. It's actually similar to the way that state law is set up for parents of minors who commit graffiti, for example. It's a strict liability issue. I think in probably many circumstances, it'll be an education point for the parent where, you know, if you need to exercise a little more control over your kid in the future, and that probably will solve it. But I don't see any reason, and Adam and I worked on some language if the council was just to consider that.
Well, that's clearly the goal, and I'd like to see that if it's at all possible.
Well, no, if, if, you know, if, if, if it's within the, our authority.
Do you have, do you have the language available?
I do.
Could we, could we hear that?
Yeah, so if the council is so inclined to make a motion, then we would ask that it be amend, amend staff's recommendation to revise Section 1062040, subsection A, responsibility of parent, to read each parent or legal guardian having custody and control of a minor who violates this chapter shall be jointly and severally liable with such minor for such violation.
That seems, is that good with you, Steve?
Yeah, perfect.
Well, I'd be supportive of adding that to the ordinance.
All right.
Mayor, we do have one speaker card before you take a vote. Would you like to hear that now?
Yeah, didn't we call speakers?
Yes, so the card did come in after you called speakers?
Okay, okay, well, let's, let's, let's hear the speaker.
Okay, Sarah Schneider.
Hi, Council, sorry. I was listening to the discussion and felt compelled. I have five kids and live in an area where there's tons of e-biking up and down southwest San Clemente. I was thinking about the concept of citation. Clemente. I was thinking about the concept of citations with youth 18 and unders, how that would proceed and play out. And it, I was thinking that really what needed to happen was kind of a, like a scared straight video, was what I was thinking. Like, when we were growing up, we saw the drunk driving videos. We were kids in elementary school and middle school, and it scared us enough to not want to drink and drive. I think we're at that point with e-bikes where this, when we think about education, rather than bringing in outside trainers from San Juan and all these things, what if the city of San Clemente, it's fairly simple to make a video, put together a five-minute, you know, scary video about what can happen when you don't use e-bikes properly and you don't wear a helmet and you run through and you're in a gang and, you know, all the, all the bad things that can happen. And if you show that video once a year in the schools, the kids get educated. Also, if you do adopt any ordinances or make any changes to the city rules regarding e-bikes, a really great thing to do would be to send flyers to all the elementary schools and middle schools in town and have them sent home with the kids. The parents will then lay eyes on that and say, okay, here, here's what, what's expected. Here is what we can be held accountable for. And I think it's a great way to communicate the message rather than just through emails from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, no, no other comments. So we don't have a motion or on the floor yet, but we have an amendment, but did you want to?
Yeah, just comments really quickly. I'm just, I'm thrilled with this. This is something that, that's, it's, I don't want to say it's long overdue, but we've been waiting for it. And I'm happy that it's here. I'm happy that we had this discussion. Our kids need to be safer on the roads. We need to be doing all that we can to protect them. That combined with creating safer streets in terms of bike lanes and other accessibility for them, this is just a huge improvement to the public safety of our community.
You want to make the motion?
I would love to make the motion that we introduce and conduct a first reading of ordinance number 1778. Do I need to read the motion? All right. And then we'll add the amendment. An ordinance of the city council of the city of San Clemente, California, amending San Clemente Municipal Code Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, adding Chapter 1062 to establish regulations for the operation and use of electric bicycles and other forms of electric transportation, inviting the ordinance not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act.
With, with the modification of the parental strict liability language that Adam read earlier.
And I'll second that. And also, I'll make the comment as a parent of e-bike riders. Actually, I think this is going to help parents because without, like, this kind of structure, it's really hard to tell your kid, this is what you have to do, because they're like, I mean, you're just saying what you think. Now we can say, no, no, this is in the city ordinances. Like, you're going to get busted by the deputies if you do this. And there's actually a structure to it. So I think as, as difficult as it may be to be paying fines for my kids, I, we'd be paying for them anyway, right? But I think it's actually going to be a helpful tool for parents too, to be able to kind of add to the, the kind of strength of your guidance to the child, that there's actually a system in place at the city to do this. So I'll second that on that note.
And on that, that fine, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say...
I just want to make, clarify, you made the motion with, with the amendment and it was seconded by...
I will accept the friendly amendment.
And I'll second the motion with the amendment.
Yeah. So, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that for the, but go ahead.
Oh, on, on the issue of fines, I believe what Carlsbad does is if they, if there is a citation, they allow the parent, or the child, I should say, to instead of pay the fine, to go to that education seminar on a Saturday at some point.
It's diversion.
Yeah, and...
It's a diversion program.
And most parents would much rather have their kids go to a scared straight presentation on e-bikes than pay that, that fine. So I'd love to see something like that implemented going forward.
All right. We've all, someone, I think we've debated this and I think everybody's given their opinion, so let's just take a vote on it. All right. We're off to start. And hopefully the, the people that are writing, you know, us every, every week will see that we're making some progress and if we need to refine it, we will refine it.
As Sarah said, I remember when I was in high school, watching the Red Asphalt movie. It scared the crap out of me. So hopefully it'll get the job done.
All right. Next item.
Next item on the agenda, introduce, introduction of an, and first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapters 8.86 and 12.18 of the San Clemente Municipal Code relating to public camping and public storage of personal property to address changes in law brought about by City of Grants Pass, Oregon versus Johnson et al.
Good evening, mayor and council. Adam Matamian, Community Development Director. I am joined tonight by Matt Silver, our city prosecutor. I will kick us off with a brief review of the background and history, and then I will turn it over to Matt to delve into staff's proposal. So recently, the Supreme Court issued its ruling in the city of Grants Pass, Oregon versus Johnson, which overruled Martin v. Boise. In February of 2018, the city council did adopt an ordinance to address camping. It was ordinance number 1650 to add Chapter 886 camping, which prohibits camping upon public property, private open space, and fire risk areas. This was done in response to a dramatic increase in the amount of unpermitted camping that was occurring in the city. However, later that year in 2018, the United States Court of Appeals Ninth Circuit issued a decision in the Martin case that severely restricted the city's ability to enforce this, this ordinance that was adopted. So in response to that, on March 19th of 2019, the city council revised Chapter 886 to address the, the finding in Martin v. Boise. And so at this point, we are coming to you tonight in light of the Supreme Court's reversal of Martin v. Boise to address our existing municipal code sections, to remove references to Martin v. Boise and to provide the enforcement that is now available to us under the Supreme Court's decision. To get into the details of the staff's proposed ordinance, I'm going to turn it over to Matt, please.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. Is the volume okay?
Yes, fine.
Okay, great. Thank you. So Adam's right. After the Supreme Court ruled just two months ago, we were asked to look through the code to see what could potentially be changed in light of the complete reversal of the law on that. So there are three primary revisions here that reflect compliance now with Grants Pass. So we came into compliance with the Boise limitations, and now we will become in compliance, the council adopts this ordinance here today with the Supreme Court ruling. So the three ways are these. One is regarding enforcement of public camping. So the current law reflecting Boise provides that we can't enforce the law absent an emergency unless there is shelter available. Subsequent cases to Boise determine that unless there are more beds or enough beds for everybody in the city, you couldn't enforce. It was all or nothing. This removes that restriction. So the city certainly can, and I very much believe will continue to offer services and shelter, but it will no longer be a prerequisite to enforcement that shelter is available. But again, nothing prohibits us from continuing to offer anyway. It just will not be a legal obstacle to enforcement, whether there's shelter available or not. And a note on shelter, shelter in the law doesn't mean shelter. Shelter, definition of shelter has reduced and reduced and reduced, where the kind of shelter that could have allowed us to enforce pre-Supreme Court ruling was very limited. It didn't mean just any place, for example. So it changes that by removing that obstacle. That's change number one. Change number two is we used to have a transitional camp component when we were, I think, setting up areas, trying to deal with this issue under Boise, allowing people to camp at certain places so that we can enforce in other places. And we had a set of rules. People had to operate by living in these transitional camp areas. That's moot now. That's no longer an issue. Those rules aren't required because we aren't providing designated areas of the city for homeless camping to occur. So it removes that. That's now moot. The third way is with regard to the removal of private property that is stored on public land. So encroaching or people storing their items on, on public property. Currently, the ordinance exempts personal property related to homeless from confiscation abilities. And this will again remove that because the Supreme Court ruling overruled the requirement with regard to that. And so people who store their personal property on public property will be treated the same, whether they happen to be unhoused homeless people or other folks who's happened to store their personal property. On public property, it will now be subject to our removal rules, which in summary are basically if it is abandoned property, it's immediately disposed of. There's no one to claim it, no one to notice. So it's abandoned. It's immediately removed and disposed of, regardless of what it is. If it is not abandoned property, then the city notices it and then stores it for 90 days. That's the current code, subject to destruction if someone doesn't claim it in that time. So those are the three main changes to bring us into conformism with Grants Pass. We can keep our current ordinance. Grants Pass does not require us to change it. However, that has been the request and it's the proposal before the council today.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any comment?
Yes, we do.
Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Tom Streeter, followed by Lois McNichol.
This is a quick comment here. I'm supportive of revising the San Clemente Municipal Code to address ordinances that are no longer supported by law as a result of Supreme Court ruling in the Grants Pass versus Johnson case. I'm supportive that the city will continue or can continue to offer services to the people experiencing homelessness. I think that's important to do. I am concerned, though, I think there's a question whether the ordinance should be, that the ordinance should be clear that camping equipment and other paraphernalia can be considered abandoned and can be removed, stored, and available for retrieval so that our deputies will have a clear authority under the ordinance, you know, to, to basically store it or remove it. Also, there should be, I think that was it. I think I'm done on that. Sorry about that. So I am supportive of this, revising the San Clemente Municipal Code, and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Tom Streeter. Excuse me, Tom Streeter.
Good evening. I'm Tom Streeter. I'm a retired gentleman of leisure. On the, Section 3 of the proposed ordinance says that we can enforce it throughout the entire city 24/7. This is a little bit of overkill. If you have somebody who is drunk, strung out on drugs, mentally ill, and refuses to get treatment, that person can legitimately be arrested and taken to the city jail for further processing somewhere else. But an arrest would be appropriate. If you just have somebody who is broke, got kicked out of his apartment, doesn't have a place to sleep, and he, he's in the park, the park ranger comes up to him and says, you got to move on. You can't camp here. He says, I'd love to. Where do I go? He wants to cooperate. It would be wrong to arrest that guy, especially if he's a local San Clemente person, as regards, as shows up on his driver's license or ID card. That guy should be able to have some place to just lie down on the sidewalk. You don't want it to be in a commercial area. You don't want it to be in a residential area. I've been pushing for the last two years to have the overlay area for homelessness be legitimate, put some kind of reasonable rules on it. Andy Hall could come up with them. He's a reasonable fellow. But let the guy, if there's no space warp, if there's, if he doesn't have a homeless shelter to go to, and he's not mentally ill or drunk or strung out on drugs, he just doesn't have a place to sleep, and it's between 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM, let him sleep in the city hall parking lot, or at least on the sidewalk in front. Let him sleep somewhere. Write it into the ordinance, because the way it's written right now, he can't even sleep in the city hall parking lot under the watchful eyes of Captain Christian. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lois McNichol, followed by Sarah Schneider.
I noticed that whenever we talk about the homeless, we're always talking about the poor guy that's not mentally ill and not strung out on drugs. And oh my God, what, what are we going to do? Are we going to throw him in jail? That really does not happen that often. So what are we talking about when we're talking about our homeless population? We are talking about 75%, and those are not my numbers, those are state numbers, that are either mentally ill or strung out on drugs. And I do not believe that with, by allowing people to be, quote, "service resistant," that in LA, there are 1,000 people who die on the street every single year from being homeless. Is that being compassionate? Is that being empathetic? Is that being somebody that really cares about their fellow human being? I don't think so. So we need to be really cognizant of what we're talking about here. And as far as we don't, they don't have any place to go and there are no resources. There is the Department of Public Social Services, which everybody leaves out of the conversation. For some reason, it's only relegated to the outreach workers that we have here in San Clemente. But the Department of Public Social Services has a great deal of homeless resources, and they're never included. But I just have one question about, I love doing, redoing the, this particular code. It's great. But I would like to know what is going to happen with our homeless people that are mentally ill and that are screaming in front of private residences. And they show videos of that on the Nextdoor app all the time. So that does happen. So we, and that is not being addressed here, and I understand it can't be. Maybe it's addressed somewhere else. I really hope so.
Thank you for the comments. Do we have any more comments?
Sarah Schneider, followed by Donna Vedrine.
Okay.
Hello, counsel. Sarah Schneider. I am support of this ordinance. I think this is going to be a useful mechanism for helping people in the long run, which is what we're all trying to do. I did want to raise awareness to the concept of the, the people that we were just speaking of, the ones that are mentally ill or addicted to drugs. We do have those in town. And part of the loopholes, there's a lot of loopholes in this, can you receive services concept. I hear it thrown out a lot by our state, by our legislators, by everybody. Says, we'll just get them into addiction services. We'll get them into mental health services. I want to raise awareness around the fact that we actually don't have great places for these people to go. And we have a broken healthcare system, really. We have a bloated healthcare system. We have a lot of money in this system, but there's not a lot of regulations. There's not a lot of care and thought put into it. So I would love to address a couple of the loopholes. I think one of those is we've been moving away from institutionalization, more towards just optional care. And I think one of the more effective things we could do as a society is treat people for longer term that need it. A second thing I want people to know is that we have an influx of for-profit, six and under operators that are trying to operate in our city. I've been dealing with two of them in other parts of our town. These are people under the guise of addiction healthcare to treat people, but they're really not. They're mostly, and they're mostly criminals. One of the LLCs that I've just discovered on, on the north end of town, all three of the owners are convicted criminals. They, they go through the Department of Healthcare Services. This is in Sacramento. This is a bloated service system that does not provide quality addiction healthcare. It's a big red flag. I want to make sure our city is aware of that. You want to find addiction healthcare and mental healthcare treatment that are big, that are licensed. Anytime you're talking about these group homes and small places, this is a total Wild West. These are fraudulent, a lot of them, and of great concern for the residents and, and safety of the people that live here. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. One more speaker?
Donna Vedrine.
My name is Donna Vedrine, and I'm a leader with the San Clemente Homeless Collaborative. We have a lot of work to do to address... We have a lot of work to do to address homelessness in San Clemente, and I think we're on the right track, but I'm not, I don't think that more ordinances are going to help the situation. I'm going to speak just for a moment on service resistance. The idea most homeless people are service resistant is a persistent myth among us. People say vile things about homeless people than say when challenged. I don't feel bad for them because they're exactly where they want to be. People genuinely think that unhoused people act against their interests, preferring not to sleep on cold and dangerous streets rather than in a safe shelter for no good reason. Why are we so quick to blame homeless and assume they are acting on their own interests rather than examining how our systems are failing those that they are supposed to be serving? Unhoused people are not service resistant. Most people would not choose to sleep outside on the street if they had a better alternative. The services offered are just not meeting the right needs. First, space in a shelter may not be available. There is also the fact that the imbalance of power and lack of sufficient oversight inside many shelters leave unhoused people vulnerable, vulnerable to violence and abuse. The fact that so many people try shelters first, but ultimately choose to take their chances on the street should make us look at what's going wrong within the shelter system. Service resistance is an easy way to let those responsible for providing services to our unhoused people off the hook. If you are offering something to homeless people, but don't see a lot taking you up on that offer, it's not because they're stupid and don't know what is good for them. There might be, there might exist barriers, or it might not fill an actual need. If they're brave enough to ask for something other than what we have offered, something that would actually fill a need for them, we become offended and get annoyed and start to think of them as ungrateful. A good way to subvert this vicious cycle is to start by asking them, what would help, and go from there. By solving problems collaboratively with the input of the people you are trying to help is the most effective way. Help make the truth louder. Choose evidence-based solutions over political agendas. Amplify the truth and counter the narrative of criminalization, all while addressing the cost of housing and skyrocketing rents. Together, we can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other?
No more speaker cards.
All right, let's move on then. I think the ordinance does exactly what, what we wanted, it's what we pursued with Grants Pass. We're treating everybody actually equally now, the, the same way. Nobody gets special treatment, but everybody is protected still. And what, what we've done here in this city, I think, is found the right balance for advocacy for our homeless and enforcement. You can't have one without the other. I, I will say to the issue of service resistance, let me ask our, our staff, because the numbers, the term, I didn't come up with it, but you know, Carly and Troy have, have told me that our, I think they've told me almost all of them, that 90-plus percent in our community are service resistant. Is that an accurate number, or are they giving me the wrong information?
So that number does fluctuate with the population that we have. One easy calculation to make though is our, the chronic homeless that have been in this city for a significant period of time, not the transients that are, that are coming through town, or only here seasonally, tip, as typically reported, it's somewhere in the 80, I want to say 85%
Okay.
That are, that have declined the offer of shelter or, or other services. And that was, that has been reported over years
Yes.
In the, the monthly statistics.
All right. And I, I would only say, nobody's trying to condemn these people or criticize them. I, I think most of them have issues that we're trying to deal with, and, and I think that's the reason we have people out there every day to say, you know, what, what kind of help? You know, can we get in contact with your family? Can we get, get you into housing? Can we get you a place somewhere? I've also written letters, and I, I know that the, we spend billions of dollars in this state and county, who gets the money for, for those kinds of services, for housing services? We don't get it in the city, as far as I know, for these kind of housing projects. We've written to the, the city and the county, asking them to address the issue. And even with Grants Pass, I mean, I, I think the whole issue of whether a city is, is responsible has been eliminated. It really is a county responsibility or state responsibility as opposed to a, a city responsibility. I know that, when, I, I was at the oral arguments, and that was one of the key issues, was does every city have to have housing? And I think the resounding answer is, is no. You know, it's counties or, or, or regions can, can provide that, and we're, we're going to utilize the, the resources of the county and other jurisdictions to, to, to help place people. Our city doesn't have to spend those resources right now, as I understand, but maybe, Matt, can you, do you want to address that, or?
Sure. Yeah, sure, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, the, you know, I think there's a concept that enforcement is strictly going to jail, and that's not a solution. That's not a long-term solution. And I'm in the business of trying to get long-term solutions for the city here. I'm not interested in convictions, I'm interested in solutions. And so I think in circumstances in which we have a person who maybe service or service resistant, I think is what we're hearing, or alternatively, maybe it's because they're not eligible for the services, and they're not resistant to it, they're just not eligible. Actually getting into the court process opens doors sometimes in these circumstances, because now I'm coordinating with the public defender, and we work surprisingly well with them. We're kind of on the same team and trying to solve this problem. We work with the UCI Law Clinic that's very involved in this, we work with the homeless coordinators, and we work with the judge. Everybody, probably a positive thing from the Boise case is that everybody's really focused their energy on how do we solve this problem, whereas probably when I started this 20 years ago, it was about kind of ushering people to a different place. And so I think that getting into the court system to the extent that that's required and unavoidable can actually open some doors. And that's our goal. That's our goal, is just, is to get these people somewhere. I had a case with a gal who was living on a street for like five years in the cold, and there is a mental health issue when you are doing that, and she was being assaulted constantly, it was awful. And we could, she kept declining and declining, declining services. Ultimately, through the court process, she got into housing she couldn't get into otherwise, and for the last three years, she's been living there. And I'm very happy about that. So that's, that is the goal. It's not to say we can achieve that every time, but that is what we're trying to do with or without this ordinance.
Yeah, and I, I, I agree, that, that is a goal. I, I give you example after example. A couple of weeks ago, I think I mentioned this in the past, Rick and I were out in North Beach, coming out of a meeting, and we ran into someone who appeared lost, and, and we, it was nine o'clock at night, and we said, "Look, we will find help for you in the morning, we will get our code compliance out here, they, they can work with you." They, you know, he said, "They didn't have an ID, they'll help you get an ID, they'll help you whatever, whatever you need." And they did ultimately help him move to, closer to family. But you know, nobody wants to persecute these people. Everybody's trying to help them, including the city of San Clemente, but there are limits to what we can do as a city, and other, you know, state and county have to live up to their responsibilities too. Any other comments?
A question for you. Do you want to go?
No, I just want to say that, you know, this is a, as people have said, it's a sad situation, you know, people that are, that are mentally ill, or drug or alcohol addicted, that are service resistant, or just are confused. It, it's sad. I, I think programs like Jim Palmer's Orange County Rescue Mission is helpful, the BeWell Mental Health Facilities, I, I wish we had better access to them. I helped set up a legal clinic at the, the Orange County Rescue Mission years ago for people that had legal issues that were homeless, that had no other resources. It's, it's sad, and, but I think not only the situation is sad, how the government's addressed it is also sad. Victor, you mentioned that the resources have been spent, $20 billion on homelessness. Unaccountable, no accounting, no auditing, no, don't know where the money went or what, what was accomplished. So as a society, we throw tons of money at this problem, and we seem to be sidestepping the core problem that people, people that are in this situation, there, there's a few that simply lost their job and, and got evicted. Very rare in terms of the habitual problems. It's sad, and I think I'd like to see our, our churches stay involved and be more involved in helping people that are truly in need, and, but I think this ordinance is, I think, headed in the right direction based on the law that we have before us. And so I, I just want to, want to agree with you all that this is, we, we need to look at this compassionately, but intelligently, and as a government, we're responsible for, for wisely managing our resources, and I think this ordinance tends to do that.
All right, Rick?
Sure.
I want to address Mr. Streeter's concern, which, which is a concern, you know, somebody just passing through or whatever, and, and just, you know, needs a place to lay down. I'll remind everybody, that's where the Martin versus Boise case started. It wasn't, it wasn't a homeless or an unsheltered person, it was a guy going into Boise to visit his kids who lived there, sleeping in the park every couple of, every other weekend, and, and they started to arrest him, and that's how this whole thing started. I, I don't think, and matter of fact, I don't think much is going to change in this city right now under Martin versus Boise, I don't. One reason is we don't have many people sleeping out there. We don't have encampments, we do probably have an occasional person sleeping, we'll probably always have that. I don't think it's going to change much. I, I really think that in the case, Tom, that you're talking about, where a guy just needs to lay down, I, I can't see, and maybe, I mean, Captain Christian, I'm sure doesn't want to weigh in, but they do have discretion. And I know when I worked as a police officer, man, I mean, you know, I worked in a place where there was Skid Row, but just going outside into the, into the suburban areas, you'd always come across somebody who was just passing through, or, or, you know, wasn't camping, he was just, and I can't remember ever arresting them. You just go, "Yeah, hey, you know, why don't you, you know, in the morning, maybe find another place," and you just left him. I, I'll, and I'm sure the same thing happens now. I really don't think that there's going to be a move in this city to criminalize somebody like that, Tom, I really don't, and I hope that's the way it is. And I think it is because I think it's going on now the same way. I think setting up an encampment, staying for a long time on the beach, I think, I think maybe that will change. Hopefully, we can compel the people to get to, you know, now that Grants Pass isn't a thing, but hopefully they'll be more compelled to even accept services now. But I, I, I'm going to be monitoring this close, Tom, and I know you are too, because you're involved, and let's make sure that that doesn't happen, that we're just not kicking, you know, somebody is down under luck along, and I don't think that's going to happen.
Mayor, may I briefly add to that? So the ordinance builds in discretion, thankfully. Now, police officers inherently have discretion under state law. I have discretion as the prosecutor of what I'm prosecuting or not, and then even with the remedies, I have very considerable discretion. And for all the points that the councilman makes, you would treat that very differently. Now, the ordinance says may enforce any violation, so that's the bill to discretion, thankfully.
Exactly.
Yeah, just to add, I, I mean, a deputy working at 3:00 in the morning, knowing he probably only has one other car out there because everybody's tied up, and walking by somebody sleeping in the grass someplace, is not going to be compelled to take the rest of his night and go if there's no other, other issues there. And that, that's why it's may, and that's why you have discretion.
Any other discussion?
You want to go?
Yep.
I'll just, a couple of questions, then I'll make some comments. Talked about eligibility of shelter, and that this, this has changed a little bit. Could you speak to what, what constitutes eligible shelter?
Sure. Yeah, well, now after the Grants Pass decision, all shelter is eligible shelter because it's no longer prerequisite to enforcement. But the OC Rescue Mission, to the Councilman Noblock's point, would not have qualified under the prior law. I do a lot of work with them too, and it's a great organization, but it's privately funded, there is a religious element to it, or there can be, and that would not have qualified. So that shelter, we could not have used to satisfy the requirement before enforcing. Now, it's as available voluntarily as it was before, and I'd, I'd argue that potentially there's more of a, an encouragement for people to take that shelter now, or go see resources at Isaiah House, for example, which is not shelter, but provides outreach and other things. So that's kind of a, it's kind of a moot point now, what qualifies as shelter from a legal perspective.
Great, thank you. And then my other question, let's assume shelter is not available at any of these, these places, what, what happens then to an individual that you approach?
So Code of Enforcement approaches them, or OCSD approaches them, we don't interact with them until we see them in court. If I, but I can speak to that. If I get a case in court, and, well, before I file it, I'll look at the case, determine is there probable cause that the code has been violated. The issue where someone is outside purely by necessity, meaning there is nowhere to go, is, as the Supreme Court pointed out in the Grants Pass ruling, still a valid defense. The, there, it's impossible for me to avoid violating the law is the defense of necessity. It doesn't mean that there's, you're making that choice, it means it's literally impossible for me to avoid that, and there was just a ruling by our Court of Appeal in Orange County out of Fountain Valley, where they were enforcing this, and they determined the court has to consider the defense of necessity after Grants Pass. So without getting even more legalese on it, if I get to court and they have not been able to get somewhere, then my job is to get them somewhere. That's always my job with the homeless stuff. How do I, now that I've got them in the court process, how do I use the court process to solve the problem? And that's, that's what we're doing.
Great. On, on the issue of, of mental health, same idea there?
Same idea, and now we have a care court opening up, where worst-case scenario, we can ask the court to appoint a conservator over the person. So in a situation with true mental health issues, where someone's in court, and they are declining, you know, voluntarily going to mental health treatment because perhaps they're not lucid at the moment to make that decision, the court can appoint a conservator. And that is just getting rolled out county by county in our state, but that's one that will be a tool for us.
Great, thank you. And then just, just one clarification, not, not question here, but just a clarification, a comment was made that loss of jobs are, are rare for the, the causing of homelessness. I, I would just counter that and, and say that loss of jobs, lots of house, loss of housing, cost of housing is causing a lot of homelessness in our, in our state and other areas. I can't speak to every individual homeless person in our town or in our community, but statewide, that, that is an issue. I'll, I'll say this in terms of comments. I think before Martin versus Boise, we saw a, a lot of the tools that were being used to address homelessness was, was pretty much the hammer. We'd come in, say, "All right, get out of town, we don't want you here." What Martin versus Boise did was it forced cities to reassess how we approach homelessness. And it forced us to put more tools in our toolbox, and these are the tools that you've been talking about, which I think overall have, have had an impact on how we address it. However, that pendulum also swung, swung too far, and it also limited us on other tools that we needed. My hope is that with Grants Pass, we get those other tools back in our toolbox, but we don't dismiss the new ones. And that's what I'm hearing you say, which is encouraging, that we are still going to positively address our homeless situation in our town as much as we can to give them the resources that they need, to get them the shelter that they need, to get them the mental health that they need, and as a last resort, then use the enforcement tool that we need.
Everything you said is correct.
Great.
All right.
Yes.
I, I would only add, if, if you look at the Grants Pass case, and you mentioned it, you know, he, he was out, out in the, the street, or sleeping in a park. In Grants Pass, they didn't qualify because there was a religious institution that had housing, and that didn't qual, that, that, in, in the court's interpretation, didn't qualify as housing. So they couldn't count that as, as housing. So that's why there was a violation. So I, I, I think that the, that the court decision has opened up this to allow the churches and, and other religious institutions, who have been, always played a, a, a large role in helping to continue to expand. institutions, who have always played a large role in helping to continue to expand their services, to take a new step forward and say, okay, we'll take up the mantle to do something in the community, to create the kind of housing that we think is appropriate. And I hope they do. I mean, I think that's one thing that people always talk about, the churches doing that. And I think some of them are. You've worked at one, and I think it's a good thing in addition to the county and the state, as I've argued state law requires. But I'd move, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to move, let's see.
You want to have the city clerk read the ordinance?
Introduce and conduct the first reading of ordinance number 1779, amend the San Clemente Municipal Code, Chapter 8.86 and 12.12, to further regulate public camping and public storage of personal property.
I'll read it, Mayor, if you'd like. This is a motion by Mayor Cabral to introduce ordinance number 1779 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, County of Orange, California, amending chapters 8.86 and 12.18 of the San Clemente Municipal Code relating to public camping and public storage of personal property to address changes in law brought about by City of Grants Pass, Oregon versus Johnson at all 2024, 144 S.C.T. 2202, 2024, and finding the ordinance not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act." Do we have a second to that motion?
One second.
I'm sorry, was that Councilmember Duncan?
Duncan, yeah.
All right. So it was a motion by Mayor Cabral, second by Councilmember Duncan, and you may vote. And that motion carries 5-0.
All right. Next item on the agenda.
Next item on the agenda, consideration of a resolution approving and adopting the 2024 through 2028 memorandum of understanding between the City of San Clemente and the San Clemente City Employees Association for Full-Time Benefit Employees and the adoption of revised City of San Clemente Employee Salary Schedule.
Related to the staff recommendation, I don't have to do anything at this point until we have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that you receive the staff report and then take public comment and then make this statement.
All right. Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brian Brower, Administrative Services Director, here to present to you the item before you. This item is actually comprised of two resolutions, one of which adopts a proposed MOU, a memorandum of understanding between the City of San Clemente and the San Clemente City Employees Association. These resolutions also include application of the proposed terms within this MOU to other categories of full-time employees here at the city, which include confidential management and executive management positions. The staff report does include a listing, a detailed listing of the proposed changes to the MOU, which are also identified within a redlined markup version of that document, which is attached to the report. I do have a few slides to go through, or if the council would prefer, I could just answer questions based on the fact that you may have already read the report.
I think we've been briefed twice on it. I've spent probably three hours each on each of those. So I think we're fine unless there's questions. No questions. So then let's see if there's, after public comment, see if there's...
We do not have any public comments.
All right.
Wait, wait, wait. You want to read the statement?
Yeah, let me just read the following. If adopted, resolutions number 24-127 and 24-128 would approve annual salary increases of 3.5%, 3%, 3%, and 2.5% over the four-year period beginning with fiscal year 2024, 2025, and would provide for fringe benefits in the form of a monthly city contribution amount based on 85% of the average of health plans Kelpers makes available to the city at the appropriate level of coverage selected by the employees for all benefited full-time city employees, including the executive management team and the city manager, as well as approving a revised salary schedule related thereto, all effective September 2, 2024. Is that all we need?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That meets the qualifications of the Brown Act with respect to that.
All right.
Did I move, that we move item 10D?
We have a motion by Councilmember Duncan.
You want a second? Our things are reversed, by the way.
Oh, yeah. That makes sense.
Yeah. I actually made the motion, but I made it on Councilman Duncan's machine.
We were just trying to keep going. We were doing this all night going, what am I doing? Wait.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Lefler.
I'll second it.
Okay, second by, second by Councilmember Duncan. Let me just correct that here. Actually, let's just do a...
Roll call's been run.
Yeah, let's do...
Kind of.
Try voting differently.
Go ahead and vote.
All right. Well, question's been called. Let's vote on it.
I voted no for Mr. Enmeyer, so we're all...
Well, I'm excitedly voting yes for Chris Duncan.
All right. So we have everybody, it's...
It carries 5-0 regardless of whose iPad you have. Everyone voted yes. Thank you. Okay.
That makes it easier.
Really happy we could deliver this for our incredible staff. And it was a lot of work. Thank you, Brian, for all your work pulling this together. Really happy we could get this contract done for our employees and give them the security and of knowing they'll be well compensated and taken care of and taken care of.
And I think Cade did quite a great job of representing the city on this also.
Yeah.
Well done, city.
Thanks to all our employees that toil here with us on Tuesday nights, alternate Tuesday nights. Thank you for your hard work. All right. Consent calendar. We have one item that we have to recuse Rick on.
Well, but now we're going to recuse Duncan on it because he's got my iPad, so.
I'm happy to be recused on your behalf.
Okay, so the item that Councilmember Lefler is recusing himself on is item 11H, consideration of a resolution awarding a construction contract to Bear Electrical Solutions Incorporated for Communica Pastrano Crosswalk Improvement, CIP Project Number 15321, and finding the project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
So you're recusing...
I'm recusing myself because I live within 500 feet of the project.
So then you're going to have to leave the city council? Will we debate that?
I'll see you guys later.
Yeah.
I do, I have to leave. Why does he have to leave?
Just go. requirement of the law, that he leave the room.
All right. Is there any comments or...
There are no comments.
Any discussion on this? All right.
I move the consent calendar, all items.
Well, let's just take 11H first because that's the one he's recused on.
We can bring him in for the... Yeah, I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number 24133. Do I need to read it?
No. That's a motion by Mayor Protim Enmeyer, second by Councilmember Duncan. Thank you.
11D?
All right.
H.
11H, yeah. He lives close to that. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, we got a vote? Okay. You're changing, you have to physically change machines?
Councilmember Duncan, would you like me to vote you? Is that a yes?
Yes.
And Mayor Cabral, that carries 4-0.
Okay. Oh, they just got switched and...
All right. Consent calendar.
I'll move the balance.
I'll second.
All right. Any comments, public comments?
No public comments.
All right.
So that was a motion by Councilmember Noblock, second by Mayor Protim Enmeyer, to move the balance.
Yeah, is there any discussion? No. All right. Let's just vote on it.
I do not have any speaker cards. Actually, I do have one card from Zen Wu. He wishes to speak on the emergency item, so should we hear that under...
At that time.
At that time, okay.
At that time, yeah.
Then I don't have any cards for oral communications.
Commissions and...
Future agenda items first.
Any future agenda items? No.
You know, something was brought up tonight about Maxburg Park. I would love to see if there's a, what our staff is doing, what we have done to look at that area as a problem zone, and then what future ideas we have going forward.
Yeah, I think it was before your time, Andy, but actually, we did do a significant amount of work. We took out, remember that? We took out some trees and trees, put in cameras, but maybe we need to see if we need to augment those procedures.
Maybe a tray memo on the activity there?
Yeah.
It's been a couple of years since we did that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I do know about that incident. I know, you know, online, I've read that, you know, that the coverage wasn't good, but I'm also aware that the sheriff showed up within minutes of the...
They were there.
Well, they were there, you know, observing, but, you know, our sheriffs did an extraordinary job at that incident. I mean, if they did, yeah, anyhow, that's all. We'll review it later, I guess, in this process.
What I think I'll do is I will coordinate both with Chief Christian, Adam and his group and whatnot, and perhaps send a confidential memo to you guys. We don't want to give heads up about some of the tactics that they may be using, but give you guys an idea of some of the things that we can do to improve the safety at Maxburg Park.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I mean, it was Chief Benfield, so it might be now, you know, Christian's here, we can sort of get his input and see where we stand.
Yeah, that sounds good. You have direction on that. Next item.
Hold on one second. I don't necessarily need a gen on this, but maybe another memo. There's issue of security at our old city hall on top of Del Mar. It's been broken into a couple of times. Maybe there's just something you could send out privately to us on what can be done there.
Yeah, I'm going to get in real bad trouble here with Samantha, but I'll just break the news. One of the things we're going to do on our day of service on 9/11 is to go over and clean up what's happening at the old city hall. There's some pretty good equipment in there that might be able to be used by some of our schools and some of that. Organize that, make sure that if there are chairs and desks and things that could be used, that we get that out to people that could use them. Make that spot look nicer. You're correct. We've got to do some work up there, and you'll be hearing more about that in the coming week or so about some of the activities we're going to do for that 9/11 day of service.
Great.
All right. Anything else? Anybody? Yeah, all right. Next item, commissions.
Commissions and committees, pardon me.
I reported on our subcommittee kind of earlier. If you want to add anything, that's fine.
No, you did a great job. Just say that we are still working on creating affordable housing and looking at what other actions the city can take.
All right.
Council Subcommittee Updates. Any...
No, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, that's, no reports here.
So this is where council agreed to recess to closed session. We do have one speaker card on that item.
All right. Let's hear the speaker.
Thank you, Mayor Cabral, Mayor Protim, and other council members. I'm here to address the election lawsuit I brought up. I'm not going into the details since it's an ongoing lawsuit and will be decided in a few days. I only want to point out that it's not a Wu versus city issue. Essentially, my campaign is seeking an emergency court order to instruct the OC Registrar of Voters and the city to delete certain information in Mrs. Sarah Schneider's ballot designation and campaign statement. The city is merely dragged into this due to technicality of the laws. That's why the city is one of the respondents, along with the Registrar of Voters, but not a defendant. I hope that this clears the air on the notion that I'm suing the city. Thank you.
All right. Do we have another speaker card?
Sarah Schneider.
All right. Good evening. I'm glad I had a chance to speak earlier on the topics that actually really matter to the city, public safety being top of the list. I'm struggling to understand why my opponent is taking the valuable resources of this city and litigating for what seems to be a very minor issue. By the way, I'm a fairly approachable person, and I never received a phone call from Zen. I would have happily met with him to discuss any issue he might have. He's a neighbor of mine. I've worked with him before, but I received no such phone call. Let me just start by saying I'm deeply honored to be a candidate in this election cycle and grateful for this opportunity. I am not backed by any political mechanisms. I don't have a professional campaign staff. I am just a resident who loves serving the public, and my community has asked me to step forward in the leadership role. Receiving the paperwork that showed my name in a lawsuit over, again, something that I think the court will determine is quite minor, was fairly shocking. I think the big news story here might be potentially revealing the character of my opponent. I can only wonder why this issue seems to be something that he determines requires a court case against our city. So I'll let the courts decide that. I have reason to believe that I acted in good faith, and I think that whatever happens, I'll be amenable to any solution that the state, the county, our city, good city, the wonderful city of San Clemente decides. I don't define myself based on any ballot designation, and I think the residents of San Clemente know who I am, what I stand for, and the good work that I do. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move to closed session to discuss this item, and then we'll be back, but we don't know how long, but it shouldn't be too long, hopefully.